I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of county board chair's set forth and Robert's rules of order. The above public notice is included on the agenda pursuant to Portage County ordinance. Section 3.1, 948, however, because of the meeting, the committee of the whole, it has no action agenda items of the comment is suspended only for this meeting as directed by the county board chair. There are people who are listed as partners in this and we will allow them to have questions, but the reason that I did that was for the simple fact that we've got about an hour presentation before us, as well as this is all for the benefit of the supervisors, the public can have it after they get the information, they may have questions and things and those can come up at the committee level as well as the board. So there's plenty of time for public input as well, and the fact that we have limited space here in this arena. And we have room five, five or upstairs. And if you're going to watch it upstairs on the screen, you might as well watch it at home on the screen if you have that option. So those are all the reasons why the suspend. Before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to make a quick statement that I'm glad we're finally to this point. Some of you, as I look around and have been with me on the county board for quite a long time and we've been dealing with this issue. Don, especially for a long time, supervisor for 20 years and I can remember meetings and discussions on this. And as I get updated and kept in the loop on this, it just frustrates me because I was part of that process as well. Let's see what we could have done, what we could have had with the money it would have cost. And looking forward, I ask everybody that we are to the point in the fact that we are, this indecision, this inability to make a decision, whatever you want to call it, has continued to amplify in the cost. And we still have the need, I believe I said it when I was sworn in as the chair, that these decisions will be late before these four to make some tough decisions. And unfortunately, this is one that has been kicked down the road too many times and we can't afford to keep doing it. So I ask everybody to keep an open mind, pay attention to what's going on and ask questions of staff, myself, and we will get you the answers and try and answer the questions the best that we can. So staff, as well as Don and all of our associates have put a lot of time and effort into this presentation. I'm being told it should take about an hour for the presentation and then we'll have questions after that. But with that, presentations of the government facilities master plan project. Don, take it away.
I was appointed to the county board in 1995. Got the jail across the street, which was already binding, was outdated at that time and having problems and all the other things had come up. So over the past 20 years plus, the county has attempted several variations of building projects or remodels. We attempted a concept of separate courts, separate jail. We attempted a concept of a full complete justice center. And for various reasons, this has all failed over these years. That's all past, that's beyond us. COVID and some of the things that have come about now have changed some of the plans and some of the things that we have to look at. So what we're looking for is we need to move forward from this point. So during this time, we have also deferred many building projects, updates, heating and ventilation, elevators, plumbing, electrical, windows. All these have been put on the side burner waiting for a plant. Many of those things are now failing and we need to take some action. We're now at the point where something must be done. That's not next year, it's this year. Need to start taking some action. Our past indecisions have placed us in this point, things are failing. Then you will hear, there was a significant amount of time that went into this study. You'll hear when we started doing the study, when we started talking about the things we're looking at, what are the best options for the county. You will be given some input in that area. All previous studies were reviewed, reviewed and remodeled versus building new, looked at that in great detail. There are pros and cons of the downtown site versus the green site, and those will be discussed. The green site is a generic green site. We have no site selected at this point in time. Tonight is also a time to educate you on these problems that we face as a county regarding the buildings. Hopefully, all the options that we have studied will be brought up and you will see why we picked what we did and how we got to that point. As we go forward tonight, please feel free to ask questions on specific topics that are in front of you at that time. At the end, we will also have questions where everybody can go back and refer to some other point that you may have thought of during the rest of the presentation. The team, there are several members from the county, myself and some of the directors and some of the staff were on the team. We also hired Tegra, who is our representative. They're here to do what is best for the county, to look out for our best interest. Fendorf is a project contractor who looked at pricing and various ways to address and how to build a product of this nature in the site. BWBR, Dewberry, are architects and designers specializing in jail and courts. The team will introduce you into a facilities master plan. The county, this considers the county's needs for the foreseeable future. Many variables come into play over this, and it must be flexible. The team of Tegra, BWBR and Fendorf will take us through the plan. Please again, ask your questions that are at that point or hold them for the end. And remember that we will need to make some decisions as the time goes forward. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Nate Pearson. Bruce and it's Don said, we are hired to represent your interests. So we, over the past 10 years, 10 months, have been overseeing the BWBR Dewberry design team and also Fendorf during construction. So we're kind of managing the process and the budget and the schedule, but we're representing your best interests as Don said. And a couple of housekeeping issues or items to mention, the packets in front of you, keep those handy. We're going to have a supplemental packet coming up here in a little bit that you'll be able to attach in the binder. And if you need copies, we have black and white copies back by Chris, I believe, or maybe they're up here. But and then we're also going to post the presentation online. If it isn't already, it'll be on there soon if you want to grab it if you're listening online. So yeah, as you said, there's a small team that we've been working with, including Todd from facilities, Jenny from finance. We've got Tim Reed and just noting, Sheriff Lucas and Judge Baker are online tonight. They could be here, but they're online. What, over the past 10 months, when we have been studying this, we've come to two of us. As Don said, we've got a downtown site, which we're going to focus on with you. We've got a greenfield site. It's a generic 30 acre piece of property. So we're studying those two. And I just wanted to clarify, those are, the images you're seeing tonight are massing images. They're blocks. They're not fully designed. So we're not talking about the design, what it looks like and the facade and things like that. We're merely just trying to fit it into a site so that we can get Fendorf to give us market pricing and cost modeling, which we will talk about tonight as well. So really quickly on the agenda and then we'll get going. We're going to walk you through these bullets here, but the process outline is pretty much just what we've done for 10 months. We're going to show you what we've done for 10 months. Master plan process, meaning how did we get to these two options that we just talked about and why? We're going to get into the details of why these two options are suitable or recommended. We're also going to involve or talk about the third party process. And this time, I'd like to recognize that the city of Stevens Point is back there. Thank you for showing up. It's important that you're part of this as well. We'll talk about a little bit more about that later, too. And then we're going to get into advantages, disadvantages of the two sites and talk about the schedule of the two sites. And then, you know, of course, Jenny's here tonight. We're going to get into budgeting. You've got Fendorf, who's got a little piece to talk to you about construction wise. And then we're going to talk about recommendations and then we'll field your questions. If you've got questions, maybe raise your hand during the process. If it's coming up in the presentation, we'll probably tell you to wait, but please, it's all about, you know, your question, your information. So with that, I'm going to turn over to my colleague, Mike Van Klaas.
Hey, so Mike Van Klaas with Tiger Group, just to kind of highlight out here, we did put some slides in so that everybody can know who's talking and who they're with and whatnot, just as a informational point there. So in your packet, as you're going to, as we go through it tonight, you're going to notice that there's more pages, more slides in the package than what's going to show up on the screen. That's intentional. We have slides that are meant to be on the screen that are going to be visible by everyone that we're going to speak to. The backup notes that are in here, the backup slides are consolidated comments that we are going to be discussing. So we're trying to lay this out in front of everybody so that hopefully you can take minimal notes and still have the entire story. So just know that that's part of the plan. We've talked a lot about questions. We asked to switch this meeting to this room with the intention, with the hope that it's going to be conversational. That's what we want to do. This meeting is all about educating the supervisors so that you guys can make the best decision in a few weeks. And we wanted the floor to feel open so that you can do that. There will be a couple of points when we'll pause and ask for questions, but just again, feel free, the idea is that this is conversational. So today really is meant to be for information. We'll go through the schedule of when votes would happen and when things would get more formal, but it is not tonight. And then just so everybody knows, we're going to walk through this big picture, but we are going to get to financially viable option that we're going to present to everybody. So just know that that's coming and we will get to the cost piece and make sure that everybody understands what that means and what that looks like as well. So to start this off, April 2022 is when we kicked this back off. That's when Tiger was brought on board. We followed up with space and properties. About a month later, started to dig into what's important, what do we want, what's the county looking for with this? Because people, excuse me, have said, this has happened a few other times. So we wanted to make sure we understood what it is we were trying to accomplish. We realized, so for those of you that know or don't know, the design team has been around since, been involved since about 2018. So as we looked at the team in detail, we identified the need to have a construction manager on board. So in June, we had the construction manager award process, Fendorf was brought on board, costing scheduling, constructability reviews. That's what we wanted out of that piece. And then in July, we really kicked off the master plan, right? What does the county need for the foreseeable future? August through October, we went through master planning workshops and we continued to develop the master plan. Again, always looking at both sites, knowing that that was going to be an important piece. October through December is when we were working on pricing, refining the plan and continuing to price some more. Now, around end of November, we're just going to, you know, call the elephant out of the room, right? We paused the meeting and that was because we wanted to get to that financially viable option. So we spent October through January looking at different ideas, researching what really meets the county's most important needs and what's going to fall into it from a logic perspective. So with that, we're going to kind of kick off the meet here and there it goes. So thanks, Mike. Yep.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bruce Omtoy. I'm an architect with Dewberry, Wisconsin, my whole life. And it seems like my whole life now I've been working on jails and courthouse projects, in and out of jail since about 1988. So that was an icebreaker. Thanks for playing. All right. So back in 1988, I got, 2018, we, as we got into re, kind of rechecking all of the spreadsheets and all of the information on every single department in the county and what this, what this, what all these needs were, was pretty quickly, the question came up, wait a minute, you know, we really need to know, isn't there something we can do with the old law enforcement center jail? And, and so we needed to take a look at that. So we, we kind of reopened a lot of the old studies, but we took a fresh look at this and, you know, couldn't we do something, right? And some of you may remember fall of 18, we did a presentation on this. It's still on the website. It's available public record. But we went through that and what we, what we already heard and what we prevalidated was that the jail that was built in the early 90s was really based on design information and approaches to operations from the 60s and 70s, some of which were still around in the 80s, shouldn't have been around. So I can say with full confidence that it's been obsolete since day one. I'm sorry about that. I wasn't here to help, but we can, we can correct this. What we, what we looked at, what we know is that could you add on, could you do something with the old jail law enforcement center? Sure. You could. You can always, right? You can always keep things going indefinitely. Everybody knows that, whether you're operating a farm or living in town. But the issue is at some point, is it, is it really going to get to where you need to be and is it going to be safe anymore? And, and the answer was it was $25 million. We could, we could max out that site. We could add on, we could do some remodeling. For $25 million, I just spoke, and what we would be left with was something that was half, half done, half right and fell way short of what the needs are even, even then, much less looking ahead 20, 30 years. These are 75 year decisions we have to make. So, so anyway, there's all kinds of deficiencies. I just want you to, you know, remember that we did take a look at this and we're trying to keep our mind open to what could we do with what we have, right? And at the same time, we know that the space just is not there. Okay. So we're going to take you fast forward here into kind of the evolution of better space and what that means and what it looks like today. And Jess, what would you tell them about courthouse?
Yeah, thanks. I am Jessica Bird with BWBR, an architect. And in addition to that 2018 study we did on the jail law enforcement center, we also in 2021 did a study of the existing city county building. And so we did two, we did it in two parts. The first part was, oh, yeah, the first part was looking at building conditions and could the building or first of all, you know, is the building structurally sound? How does the building operate in its current conditions? And so what we determined is that there are some code issues, some accessibility issues. The exterior building walls don't meet current energy code requirements. And so we would need to add insulation to the exterior walls. In addition, the, all the exterior windows would need to be replaced. And then there's other things like the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems are all due for replacement and upgrade. And so that was the first step is like, you know, if we were to put money into this building, you know, how much work would we require? And then secondly, once we knew what the, is it going? Oh, did I go too far? So then the next step was, yep, one, two, four, sorry.
Catch up, give it one.
So the next step was doing a test fit analysis. And so once the building is, you know, ready for, to be occupied, how might it fit the current and modern courthouse function? And so what we determined here was that really the building lacks space. It's significantly under programmed for what your current needs are as a county. The layout is really not conducive for modern courtroom design. The buildings are kind of chopped up and divided by a center hallway and stairs and toilet rooms. And then the really, the bigger piece is that the building is unable to achieve that security need. We're really looking for separation from the public, from the staff, from the inmates. And it's, and it's almost impossible to do that in this current building layout. And then lastly, the vertical space is not sufficient. The floor to floor ceiling heights in the building are really low. And so when you consider adding new mechanical, electrical systems, that's going to take up space in that, in that footprint. And so, you know, you'd end up with ceilings that are eight feet for a courtroom and that's just not conducive for courtroom design. And so while we determined that yes, you could put money into the building, you could make it operational, but it's really more suited for office space use versus modern courtroom design. And so, okay. So then we started the master plan process. And as Nate and Mike said, we started that process about 10 months ago. The master plan, as they mentioned, is it's not a design. It's really more about understanding what the project scope is, what all the components are in their areas, as well as, you know, what are, what's the budget and the schedule for the potential project? And so we started this master plan process. It was a very collaborative process. We met here in the annex building many times and we talked about your vision and goals for the county and what was important to you. And so, you know, we took all the notes down. Here's our team here collaborating and talking through. So it was a really collaborative process. And so.
Sure. So, so the master planning process, it has a lot to do with, really deep dives into the weeds of every single department, all the rooms that are needed, all the spaces that are needed, what kind of connections we have to have to other departments, republic, how private we need to be out here. And what we're trying to do is basically build a very elaborate of 60 to 80 pages of recipe card to get this right and figure out what is it that this is entailing. And so we, we're going back through every single department from, from the main government services and justice services for the county. So law enforcement center, 41,000 square feet, law enforcement center, fleet garage. So fleet garage, why do we need 23,000 square feet? Well, tactical response is one of the most important things the sheriff's department does. So we live in Wisconsin and love it. And so that's what that's all about. A 200 bed jail, the 200 bed jail is not wavered. That's, that's minimum and that's, that's the actual capacity. And in addition to that, to have that 200 beds work, we have 24 beds of special needs housing. We have a juvenile component that's separate but adjacent, that's 20 beds. And we have huber housing, dormitory space, less expensive, another 36 beds. So that piece of it is, is fundamental. This has been rehashed now for 20 years. We're confident this is the right number. On the courtrooms, the courthouse side, 84,000 square feet. That's, that's for four corridor, full buildout. And government services, all right, this is part of government services, this building that we're in. At some point, the question keeps coming up, we're talking 75 years in advance, we probably need to look at what could the future be if this isn't serviceable anymore? That's another 40,000 square feet. The building supports space to make it all, all work, the mechanical, electrical, 32,000. So you see where all this is going. Facilities management, we have to operate. We have to, we have to maintain these facilities. Takes equipment, takes space, takes loading docks. Total of all up, 378,000 square feet, really? Well, all right. So now, interesting thing that comes to mind is you've got about five acres of site downtown. That adds up to 8.6 acres buildings. So this one, it has to be stacked up. So now we're talking about what can stack properly, how to do that, what does that footprint look like? And so now, everything that we're going to show you here is based on department, you know, blocking, concept layouts, make sure that these massing chunks that we're going to show you actually work. Okay?
Yeah. So one of the first steps after we identify the project components and areas is, you know, how are we going to lay that out on the existing downtown site? And so you can see here on the plan that everything in the dash red lines indicates county owned property. And so just to, we're in, we're in the annex building, which is number four on the map. So we've got the LEC in jail just below us, the city county building and one and two. Also on this property is the 1039 building. And, and then there's some spaces here in the corner that are not county owned. So we have a city owned parking lot in the corner as well as a synagogue space. And so those are all things that we, we need to take into consideration as we start to lay out the building components. So as we started this process, we looked at what felt like thousands of different options and layouts. And so this slide is just to indicate that, you know, we went through many, many options to kind of land on the one that we're going to present to you today. And so we looked at, you know, where does the courthouse want to be? You know, how, what location is going to give us that civic presence that we're after, as well as, you know, traffic flow and pedestrian access and all those things. So a lot of different variables went into ultimately the, the master plan.
So as we're going, we're going through this and again, we're, we need to make sure that we can fit eight and a half acres of buildings on five acres of site and what that, what that might look like. And so after, after evaluating dozens and dozens of approaches, talking about the pros and cons of things flipping around on the site, we went through a great process, very interactive with, with the county leadership and, and this is where we've landed. Okay. We've got the, the courts is located on Strong's Avenue. In a, in a full buildout, it would be five stories nestled up against three other five story buildings, you know, the sentry insurance building and then some housing buildings that are, that are of that scale. So we're, we're starting out, you know, with that high scale and kind of keeping that away from the neighborhood area. But as you can see, there's a, there's a direct relationship between the likely jail at the top and that courthouse. They're connected. There's an umbilical cord that has to work right, has to be efficient every day. Things have to fit. We're going to do this. We've only got so much space to work with. So, so the jail becomes a two story solution. So there's staffing changes with some of that, that we have to get it right. We have to have the right numbers to make that efficient. Then we're leaving space for the darker blue law enforcement center and fleet garage to click into this long-term vision, right? And then there's parking involved that we have to look at long-term as we go ahead. That'll, we'll tell you more about that in a minute. But you can see, this is kind of that, that vision of, okay, this is, this can work and it can work well. That's what it looks like in 3D. So you can see the courthouse being orange and the public areas in yellow. Entrance to the courthouse and separate from the law enforcement center, but both serve off of a public civic plaza, green space.
To make this work, we had to propose closing Arlington. So Arlington goes away in this scheme and that allows for pedestrian traffic to easily flow from the parking structure to the front entrance of the courthouse. And then the other component was that city parking lot in the corner would have to be acquired and the synagogue would need to be relocated as part of this concept. And we also looked at a greenfield site. And so to Mike's point earlier, you know, greenfield in our mind is just, it's a, it's a imaginary site in an unknown location at this point in time. And so how might, how might it be different? How might the project look and feel different if we're able to have sort of unrestricted sites, I guess? And so, so in this option, we're able to look at a one story jail and LEC, making it a little bit more efficient for staffing as well as a three story courts. We looked at a two story government services. We're able to do surface parking in this configuration versus a parking ramp. And we're able to get that surface parking kind of separated out by, by groups. So you might have private parking for the judges. separated out by groups, so you might have private parking for the judges, you know, separate public parking versus separate staff parking. So you've got some flexibility with parking as well. And then we've got some area for facilities maintenance as well. And so, this is just a 3D massing of what that could look like on the site and how, you know, you might have a nice kind of civic entrance to the courts, make the court building the front public entrance, and then tuck the jail into the back, the rear, so kind of keep that a little bit more hidden from the public entrance.
So you could see that it takes a lot of space just for site circulation, and so those are some of the things when you compare a downtown solution to a greenfield solution, in a lot of ways, it's apples and oranges, you've got to address all those different connection points, the intake entry doesn't want to be next to the front door of the courthouse, right? And the loading dock needs to not block traffic for the law enforcement team, and the law enforcement team's got to get out and have their tactical response be as sufficient as possible, so it's all got to work, so that's what we're up to. Okay?
All right, so, one of the things that we had said was we're going to come with a financially viable option, and when we looked at the master plan as a whole, 378,000 square feet, it was just a little bit too much to bite off as step one. So, we worked with the county staff, we worked with the sheriff, we worked with Judge Baker, and we came up with a phase one that addresses the primary security, safety, and access concerns that were highlighted in all of our meetings with the coming. So what we're going to go into in a little more detail is what would phase one look like? It would still be the 200-bed jail, it would be a slightly smaller courthouse, it would have three fully functional courts, plus it would have the fully compliant family court, which is something that we spent a lot of time discussing. The government services would stay in this building as it sits today, and then the associated building support, mechanical, electrical, and facilities management. So, to just really kind of wrap it up, what we would be looking at is a three-court courthouse and a 200-bed jail and associated support spaces for phase one.
Can you tell me where the, you said three courtrooms, but then you had also talked about the family court, is that in addition to those three full courtrooms?
Yep.
Because I know there's a big need for that.
Yep, absolutely.
Other question, Mike?
Oh, yes.
You mentioned the three courts, and I've sat on judicial and general government since I've been on the county board now, and at that time, it was District Attorney Milewski, who is now Judge Milewski, had made mention about a possible fourth judge in the county if we had a courtroom for them.
Yes. So, is that, so the fourth courtroom...
Possibly change?
Nope, so the fourth courtroom was considered in the master plan, and when we were looking at ways to reduce square footage and reduce costs, we met with Judge Baker, and we were talking through what are the county's needs, you know, today for the next, let's say, 10 to 15 years, and when would that fourth judge most likely be needed? And so, the timing of when the judge would assume to be needed matches, we'll go through a little bit more information later, of when those next phases could get built.
Because at the time that Judge Milewski, now Judge Milewski, District Attorney Milewski at that time, was talking about that could happen very near the future, so that's been pushed down the road now?
So, the conversation we had with Judge Baker is that that feels like that's 10-plus years out.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question, and that's, again, that's why we're master planning everything out to include that fourth judge and making the right accommodations for it, so we can all set ourselves up for phase one.
Mayor?
So, just because I need to be really clear, because I also sat on judicial general government when I was on county board, and Supervisor Jankowski, sorry, Jankowski, and to his point, are you telling me now that the judges say there is not a need for a fourth courtroom?
They're saying that the immediate need today is three fully built-out courtrooms plus the, what's been referred to as a family courtroom.
Okay, so there is not a need, you know?
Judge Baker's on.
Judge Baker's on, Judge Baker, if you'd like to jump in here and add a comment?
Hi, hi, yes, I would like to. Supervisor Jankowski is spot-on correct. The, with regards to the need for a fourth judge, and our county was considered for a fourth judge in the last couple of years, there has been a couple of rounds of counties that have been awarded an additional judge or an additional branch. Our county was passed over because we did not have a facility, and we weren't able to make a promise to have a facility. Because of that, we were passed over. At this point in time, what has been shared with me from our District Nine Court Administrator as well as our District Nine Chief Judge is that our opportunity, I guess I'll call it that, has come and gone, and we are not going to be considered for another judgeship because the high-need counties have been awarded extra branches, and we are considered, while we have big caseloads, we're not considered as high a need as the counties that have been awarded extra branches. All that having been said, Nate and Mike, I'd like you to focus on the room that we are calling a jury room, a jury assembly room, and talk about that a little bit, because that jury assembly room can be turned into a fourth branch pretty easily, which is a lot like what they did in Wood County. They just took an existing space, they said, hey, this existing space could be turned into a courtroom pretty easily, and so they had the ability to turn it into, and so that's what happened. That's why Wood County was awarded a fourth branch. Hopefully that makes sense, hopefully I've answered your question adequately, but Supervisor Jankowski is spot-on correct, we need another branch, but we are not, at this point, we are no longer in the running for the branches that have been awarded in the last couple of years, and we probably will not be in the running again for a number of years, as has been explained to me, as well as Judge Milewski, he was in on the meeting as well, that it's going to, you know, it's probably going to be a few years now before the state starts awarding additional branches. Hopefully that's answered your question.
Thanks, Judge. So, to put a bow on that real quick, so there, within the square footage of the courtroom, the three courtroom courthouse, there is a fourth space that just isn't built out. So, there's shelf space there that was going to be, I'll say, minimally finished, so that when it came time to build out in the future, it could be built out in a more efficient manner.
Supervisor Barry Jankowski?
The only thing, or the statement that I would like to make, it's not really a question, is I would caution us all about not building this facility large enough to begin with, it may cost us a little more to begin with in the rising cost of construction. The building we sit in this evening was planned for a other floor to be built on when we needed space. Of course, as time goes on, the mechanics of everything codes change. Now, of course, it costs too much to put the fourth floor on when we need more space, and I've said this from day one, since I first got on the county board, when this conversation was going on for several years prior to that, that for me to sell it to the general public and my constituents, it's much easier to go to them and say, look, we need to build space for not only now, but for the future, and not worry about having to take a roof off, add another story, let's do it right the first time and not do it over. But, again, that's a general statement, again, I always refer to this building that, you know, we have the hallway to nowhere upstairs because there was supposed to be another floor able to be added, but by the time we pull all the air handling equipment and everything, it just gets expensive, and construction costs go up each and every day, as it seems now, so let's be a little careful about not building it large enough for the future when we're talking about a 75 to, yeah, 90-year project.
Supervisor Keller, then Supervisor Pataki?
I was just wondering if we have an estimate of what additional costs against the budget would be incurred by law enforcement and the government services were we to not proceed with those?
That's probably coming up later on in the process, so Stan?
For the judge, looking at the three courtrooms that we have right now, what I remember, I haven't been in the jury assembly room, but that's a very small room, how are you going to give a judge and...
That's the current size of the room. What size is the one that you're anticipating in the new building?
2,000 square feet.
You know what our current one is?
We don't have a jury assembly room. We don't have one, our juries assemble in our courtrooms. Just to be really clear, we don't have one.
So this is actually a different room that we don't have currently that is the same size or very adequate to the three that you're proposing?
Yes.
I think, yeah, I think Nate and Mike can probably answer that better than I can, but that's exactly correct, is that this space that's being proposed for the jury assembly room is roughly the same size as a juried courtroom, and I'll leave it to those guys, I won't interrupt.
So, and maybe the easiest way to, I'll say, you know, put this into perspective, when the courtroom sizes were being discussed, or any room sizes were being discussed, and when we came up with the original 389,000 square feet and then 163,000 square feet that are remaining in phase one, the design team was comparing what they were hearing as needs from the county against best practices in design standards today. So, rightsizing the rooms to what current design standards would be was part of what they were working on. Yeah, so, sorry, 183, going from...
Yeah, I think we're going to flip back to a phase one, now showing you, so what is, we've got this context figured out, right, for the master plans, for everything to have a place, the thick broccoli and connect hardly. So then when we look at phase one, we're going to show you the downtown, and we'll show you on the greenfield, just try to kind of get everybody used to the ideas here, so...
Yeah, I think, you know, the good thing to show here is the comparison, right? So you can see where we started from, which is the master plan, which has all of the components laid out on the site, to compare to phase one, which is what we're proposing, which is the reduced courts program, the three courts plus family court. We still have the two-story jail component and loading dock, and then the annex remains existing with office space in it, and the LEC remains existing. And so, so you start to see that we can have some surface parking that will feed the courts and the jail as part of the phase one. And then we show how that 3D massing would look, and so, to Bruce's point, is that when you do the master plan, it helps identify, you know, where future expansion can happen. And so I think, even if you're going to look at a phase one, ideally, you're going to have those phase two and three in the future, so you want to lay these buildings out in the right location and still maintain a two-story jail so that you've got room in the future to add that future LEC. And so then, as you compare the massing from the master plan to the phase one, you start to see how, you know, how that project can be phased over time.
Supervisor... Stan?
When you talk about a two-story jail, is there going to be cells on each floor?
Yes, it would be, yes.
All right, now, doesn't that need to, is it more personnel? If we're talking about a pipe-type system, it needs more personnel because you have to have personnel on each floor.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, well, if, well, if there's all personnel, I mean, personnel costs are there all the time.
Yeah, and this is, and Sheriff Lucas is on two, if he wants to talk, he can raise his hand. This is the downtown site, remember? It's not ideal, Sheriff Lucas would say that is not ideal, but in order to fit the eight acres onto five acres, Sheriff Lucas looked at with us and said that would work. It's not ideal, but that will work. He'd rather have that than not, don't I mean? So, we'll get into the greenfield site where it's all well-known.
But again, when we talk about the two different concepts, you're probably right. So, when we look at in the future, if we need different staffing needs for one versus the other, would affect our long-term decision.
Correct.
It's definitely a factor, there is, there's some flexibility in staffing options that go away when you have to commit to having a full-time, 24/7, that's five staff, not three, to cover 24/7, seven days a week, 265, right? So, when you commit to that, it changes some flexibility options that you have handling the same numbers of inmates, right, on the same level, because if everybody's on the same level, you can be right there and help each other, you know, and see what, look across and get that casual glance going, there's a lot of layers to this. But, yes, it's definitely a challenge, and there's a right way to do it, you can do it. Is it going to be as ideal as one level? No, never.
Supervisor Hamel?
Could you go back and, where did the number 200 beds for the jail, can you, could you repeat what that consists of, because our county is pretty committed to diversion programs?
Yes.
So where does the 200 bed?
That, that, so, there's layers of studies going back to the early 2000s, those involved in one in 2003-ish, but anyway, of what the bed needs are going to be, and they've kind of bounced around, and you settle down from talking about 300, 300 some, down to 200 actually, but the 200-bed jail is the rated capacity, and in order to have pure rated capacity of 200, we actually have to have 24 special needs housing cells, which work to this diversion topic that you're hinting at, and it has to do with handling the mental health problems and the medical problems correctly and safely, and having that resource. So there's a lot to that story, but that's your pure capacity. In addition to that, there's 24 beds, and Sheriff, would you like to jump in here?
Sure, you know, for this, since eight years since I've been doing this in regards to looking at jail numbers, you know, my predecessor initially thought that we needed a 400-bed jail. Looking back at the numbers throughout the last 20 years, you know, there's, there are some peaks and valleys, but the average daily population averages between 1 and 159. A 200-bed facility allows us to classification that the DOC requires in regards to separation of inmates from low, medium, and high risk. It also gives us the opportunity to have the mental health, the programming, and items like that. 200-bed facility is something that we looked at very carefully so that we were not building too small for the next 10 years. Also, in this design, the concept is the ability to add pod systems in the future if need be, where the, right now, we don't have that capability when we're talking about the remodel. Of course, I think everybody knows, I did preach on that eight years ago, looking at that $26 million to remodel the current facilities does not add any jail beds, keeps it a linear-style jail, it's staff prohibitive with a two-story or one-story with our jail shipping budget, I did look at that for operations, and we'd be able to make that work.
Oh, so I, Sheriff, correct me in any of these statements that I want to make, but I remember you telling us as well that there are so many different categories, so you have juvenile, you have juvenile male, you have juvenile female, then you have other people in other areas where you have to have separation, and at any one of those, you don't want them at their capacity. So if you have five cells for each of those, and you're always at five, there's no room for anybody else there, and then by state law, we're supposed to be with, underneath a certain number of the capacity.
Correct, 80% is what the capacity rate is, what the Department of Corrections asks, I mean, you can go over, there's some exceptions, but not for long. The other thing, too, is that, what you were talking about, the juveniles, this does include... a juvenile detention facility that the county board and the county has made a priority to keep a facility for the juveniles in Portage County. But that, what you are saying is correct in regards to the classifications, because right now, we don't have that luxury. So we could have somebody of violent crime sitting, somebody that's sitting with operating after revocation. So, I mean, these are, these are things that we've been dealing with and our staff does an outstanding job in regards to trying to do the separation, but this is long overdue.
Can you, can you tell me how many we have currently in our our jail? And I'm not going to hold you to a specific number, but roughly, how many do we have here and then how many do we have in Wapaka?
I, I didn't look at my jail numbers this morning, I apologize, but I believe it was seventy-nine with approximately twenty on home monitoring and then we have thirty-five over in Wapaka safekeepers.
Or over a hundred, you know, with Wapaka and what we have here. And then when you try and separate all those different categories and stay within the state rate, so two hundred is probably a safe number.
Correct. During the COVID, our numbers actually decreased slightly, but they're, of course, going back up because now people are are going back to court and they're getting sentenced and and items like that. So we are, our numbers have steadily increased in the last six months.
And I know that in the past, somebody has made a comment on the county board floor that we put too many people in jail and I had reached out to Andrea to have her look at the counties around us and per capita. And this was before COVID. We put less people in jail than the other counties that surround us, so. Judge Baker, you got a comment?
I, I do. I echo everything that the sheriff has stated, but I, I want to add one last comment. And I think it was Supervisor Honnold that may ask the question. Having a two-hundred-bed capacity jail allows us to bring our inmates back from Wapaka. I'll tell you, one of the, well, I'll say this as carefully as I can. It is an unfortunate thing, sending people to another county where we don't have control over programming, education, visitation, et cetera. And people really languish when we send them to Wapaka. So from my perspective, it's really important to be able to house all of our inmates here in Portage County. And if she has any questions or wishes to speak to me directly about that, I'd be happy to elaborate to her privately.
Thank you, Judge. Don, Supervisor Jankowski.
Bruce, when you talk about adding another pod, where would we add another pod in the downtown area?
Thank you, Don. That's a great topic. Well, you may have guessed this already, but there's no sign available for it to go horizontally. So guess what? Now we're talking about a three-story jail in the future. And now, and now if we're committed to that, we're buying heavier foundations to to hold up what may or may not be needed in the future. Can it be done? Yes. Is that a great idea? No. But that's, that's going to be the corner that you're going to walk into.
That's the other, that means additional staff to take care of that third floor.
Yes. That point, yes.
Along with the additional staff for the second.
Correct.
Somebody else?
Additional fixed fixed staff post that you don't have an option. You're losing the flexibility on one and then you're, you're hoping that that, knocking on wood, that you don't need to have another hundred beds in the future because that is a whole nother set of staff.
Supervisor Latchikowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think part of my question was just answered that in what you last said there. But I look at the master plan for downtown and I look at the phase one for the downtown site. And then when, like every good student, I flipped ahead and peeked at some other slides. It, the answers are in the back. And I realized that the greenfield site showed future expansion possibilities. As I look at the master plan downtown versus the phase one downtown, I see we go from five stories to three. So where's, where's phase two go downtown? And I think you kind of answered that, we have to go up. This building was originally designed to go up and now we were told you can't. That's a scary situation. So I guess what I would maybe.
It's not that you can't go up, it's that.
Well, it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
So we are going to get into a pros and cons discussion a little bit later, which I think some of these questions will address there. And then if there's ones we want to dial into more, we could definitely go into it at that time, so.
With all due respect, great questions. Let us finish with that, despite of these guys talking about the.
And I, and I was going to suggest that, too, that the rest of these aren't, don't know what what's coming ahead. So for some, to some point, if we can hold some of these questions, we may see it. This is a concept for the downtown. There's also a concept for the green space. These are all good topics that we're talking about and they they should be talked about because they help to make us a good decision going forward. Stan, are you okay with it or do you just want to make comments?
Just quick, in a two-story jail, the kitchen is going to have to be forever. Now, to certain, is there a separate elevator that that you're in jail?
Yes.
Yes, you don't have, you don't need that green space. Right?
Correct.
So the the phase one greenfield site is looking at a one-story jail, so all, all on one level, loading and food service on the level with a connecting link to the courthouse. There would be an elevator, a separate inmate elevator for access to the courtrooms, but otherwise, all of the jail would be on the one floor. And then in this plan, we've got, you know, future expansion capabilities for the jail out this direction. So the jail would expand on one level in this direction. And then there's also space for that future LEC and fleet garage, as well as space for government services to move over and potentially some facilities, maintenance, staff spaces as well. So that's all on the greenfield site. And so then, yeah, again, just to compare, and I don't, sorry, we didn't dash it in here, but you see it dashed in there, the future, future jail expansion on that first floor. And let's see. Just the greenfield massings, you can see, very similar to the master plan. We're just missing a few components here, but parking lot, it gets reduced. You don't need as much parking in phase one. We still have that nice ceremonial front entrance to the courthouse. And then, and then just the comparison between the master plan three D concept and the phase one concept.
Okay. So we touched on it a little bit, but there's definitely a lot of third-party involvement that's going to be required whether we build downtown or whether we build on a greenfield. You know, the city of Stevens Point, which we're going to go into a little bit more detail on some ideas here shortly. We met with the Historical Society to discuss the synagogue. Generally speaking, they're on board and understand with some rules, we could relocate the synagogue. We reached out and talked to Wisconsin Mella a little bit. They own the alleyway that's over behind the ten thirty-nine building. And honestly, they're not interested in selling. We asked that question. We've talked to Century Insurance a little bit because, again, eight acres of building on five acres of site. Century Insurance is, you know, wants to keep a hold of what of what they currently own. And then also, we just put the others TBD, because depending on the location that we choose, it's obviously going to impact the different third parties that we have to work with. Now, I thought this was an interesting map that I, I think Tim put this together. And so what the idea here is, we're trying to understand exactly what is it that the county owns, which is in blue with the understanding that that's a shared space. And then kind of the the peach-orange color is what the city owns, right? And so when it comes to third-party involvement, specifically with Stevens Point on a downtown site, phase one, we would need this, along with some property, most likely along the river, to relocate the synagogue to. Jessica touched on earlier that part of phase two would really require vacating of Arlington to make that whole process come together. Now, if you talk about involvement of Stevens Point, the greenfield site, we have done some preliminary site searches, nothing really in earnest. And to find a site, twenty-five to thirty acres within the bounds of Stevens Point that's available, there wasn't something readily out there. So annexation would be something that we would need to talk about in order for that property to come into the city. So that would definitely be a consideration. And then with the greenfield site, public utilities most likely would need to be extended. The landowners, obviously, we would have to identify and work with. And then just continuing on with some of those unknowns that come with with the greenfield property that's outside. So with that, as I mentioned a little bit before, we've got a lot of advantages and challenges that we've been discussing and we're going to let this team here take that over.
So we talked with both the downtown and the greenfield site. There's obviously advantages and challenges to both of those. And so as we worked through the master plan process and concept as a team, we came up with some lists of things, and this is a very abbreviated list. I think you have some additional comments in your packet, but so we'll start with the downtown site. And one advantage of the downtown site is that it's a familiar site. Your courthouse is already here. People know where your courthouse is, so it wouldn't be far away. It can be accessible by individuals in close proximity to the lawyers that work downtown as well. It's also on county-owned property, so we don't have to seek and acquire additional property with the exception of the the corner piece that the city owns. We know that there are utilities in place and we know we can connect to them. And so that's an advantage for the downtown site as well. And then lastly, city support. You know, we want to make sure that we have city support in this decision. And so certainly, we feel like we'd have that in the downtown site location.
Yeah, then we come to the challenges, right? So, so the challenges list, we had, since we have a various student body, they've already jumped all over the fact that there's some, there's some staffing things that are going to be a challenge longer. And I, and I really am sincere that there's a right way to handle that. We can, we can get close, but it's going to be really tough to get the same staffing that we can do on a one-level jail in a multi-story, even at two, even at two major levels where we have inmate. Basically, what we're talking about on the downtown site is all the inmates come into the main floor level, the the heavy things, the plumbing-heavy kitchen, things like that are all on the main floor level by the loading dock. So we're not, we're trying to be sensible, right? But we get that much, we get the juvenile component and then, and then when we get to that two-hundred-bed jail, the the main housing area with that big staff hub, it's actually up a level. So everybody that's coming in off the street, yes, we're going to deal with as many as we can and we're going to do diversions as best we can. And then at some point, most of those two hundred are going up, up and down elevators. And so it's just a different kind of operation. It happens all over the country. And if we do it right, it can be, it can be good, but there's a commitment there right off the bat of a whole nother separate staffing post, so, okay? So that's the biggest thing. Other than that, we've talked about our site constraints, right? We don't have eight and a half acres, we have five, and so there's all that. But when you, when you, we've, we've shown you glimpses now of what it means on a greenfield open thirty-acre site versus downtown. And what you probably noticed is that there's a lot of site circulation that goes around this thing with entry points for loading docks and for inmates and for eventually the law enforcement center staff and then the public side that has to be safe and efficient. So that's, that's one of those constant challenges in a downtown site is that it's just, it's just more restricted. So can we get it right? Yes. We just need to go in with our mind wide open.
Mike touched already on the third-party, and all the things associated with that. And then we'd like to invite Joe to come up and talk about the construction advantages.
Joe Schukert with Fendorf. And so both Derek and I are working on the constructability side. And so we, one of the challenges for the downtown site is just think about it, it's an urban site. And so deliveries and staging areas are very limited. We had reached out to Century, as Mike had mentioned, and they were very open to sharing that parking lot for a period of time, but, you know, there's a cost to that. The downtown site would be phased construction, so it's going to be a longer timeframe. And so the more time that you're constructing, the more volatility in the market, the potential for cost increase. Just the, from a constructibility, the amount of equipment, so if you think about a compact site like this and getting materials around that site, from a constructibility side and from an equipment side, there's going to be significant more equipment that would need to be, whether it's tower cranes, cranes that are not movable and they're far more expensive, and it's just, and it's an increased cost for construction. I think the other thing we've got to keep in mind is that the annex is going to be occupied when we're doing all this. Yes, we do want construction and occupy buildings all the time, but there's going to be an impact, right? And so I think we got to take that into account. In the future part of it, you know, relocating utilities are Arlington. If you've done urban construction, relocating utilities is not easy. And we generally are going to find something that's not on a map. And, you know, those are just some of the things that you can run into from just the constructibility on the downtown site. So then I'm going to just jump the shark a little bit, talk about greenfield sites. So, you know, clearly, in a greenfield site, our staging area is really unlimited. Our ability to move equipment around is very easy. If you bought lumber, if you bought any equipment, if you bought air handling equipment, electric equipment, you know that that stuff is twenty-six to fifty-two weeks out. We have areas here on a greenfield site where we can store that safely. Where in a downtown site, where are we going to put it? We're going to store it. So there's a lot more areas for laydown, a lot more areas to be more efficient in our construction. I think the other thing is just the expansion opportunities that they've mentioned. They're clearly, are, it's much easier to do the expansion in that greenfield site. And we talked about the annex. It's a perfect example of can it be done? Yes. Is it cost prohibitive? Possibly, right? And so I think you got to take that long view of it. So with that, you know, one of the challenges is, it's a greenfield site. It probably isn't, maybe there isn't water, maybe there isn't sewer, power, fiber, all the things that make that building work, right? And so got to take that into account as well, so. But so we've, we've touched a lot about plan efficiencies, plan comparisons and and kind of all the apples and oranges topics, but overall, we would, we certainly consider that to be an advantage on a greenfield site. We're basically, you know, we're bowling and, you know, taking the, taking the rails off the gutters, you know, and if we can do this, as opposed to ideal, as our budget will allow and still be appropriate for Stevens Fountain and Portage. I think Derek's going to jump in and I'll talk construction schedules and things. Derek Burdick, Senior Project Manager with Fendorf. So the tour schedule we did with the downtown site, apparently in that first box was, which is this informational period, Mike's going to touch on the assumptions we're making for this and that decision dates. Really, the decision date kicks off going from the concept design that we're in to schematic design. So that's evolving the plans, starting to understand the infrastructure of the building, starting to look at what they look like. At the same time, downtown, we got to work through some of the property acquisition elements. We have to figure out the synagogue and where that's going as the design's progressing. So, so construction starts during design. That that first element there is relocation of the synagogue. So we, the intent would be to actually do that this fall. So that is moved out and then early in the spring, ten thirty-nine comes down. And so that's what we term as enabling work. It enables us to start the major projects. So next, next May, June, construction of the new jail and courthouse kicks off downtown. It does take us out to May of twenty-six. And then that's the point that Portage County moves into their new spaces. So then, looking at the greenfield site, it's still the same informational period that we're in. We, we extended the, the property negotiations element, understanding that we don't know where it is, we got to find it, we got to work through that, and it's just going to take work. And then essentially, put this out in design. Because we don't have that enabling work, we're, we go straight into construction on the greenfield site. Once we, once design's ready, we have our permitting in place and in all those elements. If you toggle between or look at the two schedules in front of you, greenfield, we start later because of that enabling work and we actually. later because of that enabling work and we actually finished the project two months earlier. With that, I didn't have to hand out some additional information.
So this is the budget package that, you know, as the comment made earlier, every good student looks ahead. So we wanted to keep your attention on the background before we, before we shared this. So we'll hand these out and everybody wants to put them in the back. So as this goes around, maybe the first thing to note is that the numbers that we're going to go through and the numbers that you're going to see are project budgets. Construction.
Completely, Mike, I apologize. Why is this just being dropped off now and why weren't they included in the budget early immediately?
Because we wanted to keep attention on what we were talking about and not lose track of the cost earlier.
You got a couple copies of that?
Yeah, bring it on just a second.
So the, the numbers that we're seeing are all-inclusive numbers. So it's construction, it's soft costs, it's design, there's assumed costs in a greenfield budget for purchasing roughly 30 acres of property. All of these, right, is assumed in there. So we've been talking a lot about greenfield and downtown and this is going to continue. You'll see that there are bar charts right now because as we make decisions, we can slide up or down the scale, right? So at this level, again, we're at concept, we're not at design, we're trying to put brackets around what the project could cost. Downtown master plan, everything we had done to fit us in need, somewhere between $225 million and $300 million. Greenfield master plan, all in, somewhere between $200 million and $250 millions. It was at that point that we hit the bottom button in November, we spent a lot of time with Jenny and with the county's financial advisor, understanding what is the impact of a project of that nature on the county? And is it something that we could recommend as being the right next step for Portage County? The answer simply was, we needed to find something a little bit less than all of that on day one. So we went back, worked with the sheriff, worked with the judge, worked with the other county directors, understanding their needs and settled down on what the phase one that we've been talking about, the three-room courthouse and 200-bed jail. Again, these are presented in ranges, downtown phase one, somewhere between $160 million to $190 million. But for conversations and to focus on a number, $175 million, we think we can build a facility that will work now and into the future. On a greenfield, we think we're closer to the $165 million. Now, within these numbers at this level of concept, we do have some contingencies that we just wanted to discuss a little bit. There's a 5% design contingency, which that's for the unknown elements that we know are going to come up as the design progresses. There's an estimated contingency of seven and a half percent. Again, that's for anybody that's got a remodel or a project in the last two years understands what's happening with construction costs. So that's helping us to mitigate that, knowing that this project is in the future. As we work through the design, the design estimating contingency is we'll ratchet down towards zero as we set in on our budget and start construction. The construction contingency and the owner's contingency will remain through the project. Those are for the things that we uncover as we start the project. So again, downtown phase one, $175 million, greenfield phase one, $165 million. Now, when can the next phases happen? We took the costs of the next phases in today's dollars, escalated them out over the next 25 years based on historical data.
I don't know if we can do that.
Right?
Couldn't do it with the healthcare center project.
I'm not going to touch that one. So when we looked at this, we used the escalated numbers and we met with the counties, again, their financial advisor again. And so we were plugging in the estimated cost for said year, looking at some of the metrics that Jenny's going to go over a little bit later to understand. So phase two, whether it's downtown or greenfield, should be LEC and fleet garage. Downtown, you're talking about 2031. The court expansion, the fourth courtroom that we were talking about earlier, off 2039. Parking garage, 2042, but there's a caveat behind this because of you may need a parking garage with the courtroom, that's a study that has to be done with parking needs at the time the court would get expanded. And then government services, we're labeling as optional. You have this building right now, is it sufficient? It might be, what happens with the city-county building? There's lots of questions. But again, by 2048, this building may have timed out and so the answer might be that you needed any of this. Just a point, and I think it's been made, downtown construction is going to cost more than a greenfield construction. Fendorf went through and kind of discussed those things. So as you're making a decision, you know, that's a consideration to just, to just be aware of. And HHS was not part of this project, one second, then I'll, was not part of this project, but we did consider if the county wanted to bring HHS onto one consolidated campus, is there a space for it? Is, will the box fit? And the answer is yes, for both sites. So just, we wanted to make sure to share that. Mayor, I'm going to hit this slide and then I'll get there. So greenfield, a little bit different in timing, but relatively close. LEC and fleet garage around 2030. Government services, somewhere around 2036. You'll see that the, the order changes a little bit because government services in a greenfield situation would be here, not on the campus. So the thought was that you might want it out there sooner. And then ultimately court expansion to sort of round that out and then the same HHS, no.
Two things. One, if the government services are still down here and everything else is on a green site on the other side of town, doesn't that take up more staff resources, be going back and forth?
There would be transferred, there would be travel costs between departments if they were on two different campuses, yeah.
Yeah, and likely with those, we probably wouldn't have enough employees if they're too busy traveling, we'd have to add staff on an outside site too there. That's, but the one that really gets me is the parking garage. What, what are you using to determine that you need a parking structure?
So why don't Jessica or Bruce, if you guys could address that conversation, or actually Dwayne, you did the study on it, yeah?
Hi, I'm Dwayne Jones, P W B R. So when we started looking at all the different options and just, but I would, we talked about downtown. The issue was that a courthouse doesn't show up, a courthouse doesn't show up in the city where that's really, you know, but there are similarities. And so then this is similar to other projects we've seen where it's very similar to like an office building, that we would subtract the space for the jail where there's really nobody there, the staff, of course, but nobody, residents aren't going to be driving, right? So we went through an analysis like that. One, 300, one, one space for 300 square feet of space.
Okay, but there are no requirements anywhere in the downtown for parking. Now, you, you have parking that you have now, but I didn't see us utilizing the current county parking lot on the other side of the current county city building. In any of your designs, what's the intention there? Even that can use it as a parking lot anymore?
We did take that into account, actually, too, Mayor.
Okay, because I didn't see it on any other drawings.
No, you're probably right about that, yeah. We did take that into account as far as the overall analysis.
Well, it was going to remain parking and we, I would say becoming part of where a building would go, but it was taken into account when counting stalls.
Okay, but you're basing that on a presumed need of one spot per 300 square feet.
Correct.
Okay, so, but you don't need that.
In the master plan, the full, if we did a full master plan all at once, the need was showing something other than just fit on just surface parking.
But without adding staff, why would the car, number of cars increase?
Our courtrooms increases and so the people coming. So the other part of that was when you mentioned the, the parking lot on the other side of the city-county building, the assumption was that if we built a new courthouse, that somebody else would move in, maybe the city would take over that building or potentially HHS could move into that space and then they would need that parking for that function.
Okay, so HHS is part of this study then?
No.
It was part of the study to, could the building fit on the site? Now, Mayor, to your point about the parking.
The only reason I say that is because everybody in the room knows that a parking structure is 10 times more expensive than surface parking. We've got over 1,400 surface parking spots in the downtown area. Take the parking structure off, I just saved you $45 million.
So that is an excellent example of the third-party involvement and why we need Stevens Point to be part of the solution. Because when we looked at the metrics of what we understood the parking requirements to be, I would say that it would be untypical to not need a parking structure with this much development in an urban site. But if that's a commitment that we're able to, I'll say, you know, take and understand, that's definitely information that we, you know, should be considered when the county supervisors are making a.
Considering that on the table, because that, that's a big deal. I mean, $45 million to park cars, that takes a pretty big chunk out of your, your price when you're considering the downtown site.
And that's a future phase as well, so that.
2042.
2042 escalating.
Right, because it's included in your overall cost, making the overall project of the downtown site significantly more expensive and we can cut it by $45 million.
So I think what we could do to address that concern is we can pull the unescalated parking costs out of the original master plan number to help understand that. So we can do that.
Thank you. May I ask the mayor if you're talking for your downtown businesses, that they're going to give up the parking that they may need?
No, they're not giving up anything. I can tell you right now that there are spots, entire lots that have four cars in them. The Crosby Lots is a perfect example of that. You should come to the city more often.
Mr. Chair.
Too crowded downtown, you can't find parking.
Super rider, so you can stop anywhere.
Mr. Chair, can we get back on schedule, please, on getting us county supervisors the information? And then after all, the information is out there, if the mayor wants to engage with the county and their thoughts and plans and ideas, he can do so at that time.
He's, he's got questions and he's pertinent to this conversation.
I understand, but.
Supervisor Matt Chakowski?
I will hold my question until later, thank you.
Okay, so now we're actually going to get into what are these, the costs of these projects, phase one, mean to the county?
So I'm Jenny Josie, I'm the county's finance director, for those of you who do not know me. Just a few things. So we took the concept plans of both the downtown and the greenfield that our team worked on. We invited our financial advisor into that team. We use PMF for these conversations to look at different debt scenarios of what the impact of the facilities do to the county's debt service. Now, keep in mind, I'm talking about the facilities. I know we had a little bit of conversation earlier about operational costs, this is just about the facilities. Those assumptions, the one first thing that we focused on was equalized value, equalized value and what the growth would be over time. We're talking about debt service that we're going to issue for, you know, 20 to 25 years. So we have to be looking over time, what is that going to do to equalize value and how does that fit into our schedules? We did a 15-year average, which is roughly about 3%, a little over 3% per year. One of the things that we looked at early on, and keep in mind, we looked at lots of different metrics while we were talking about dollars. We looked at other counties, not only in Wisconsin, but Midwest and the impact of debt service for major facility projects. So one of the early assumptions we made was we wanted to keep the general debt outstanding at under 40%. So I can tell you with the models that we came up with, I just looked at one a little bit earlier. We probably, once we get started, we have about six years where we're in the mid-30s and then we drop below 30 as we start to repay that debt off. It's important that the county look at staying in their, their legal debt margin. I don't have to tell you about that, but our legal limit is 5% of our equalized value. What does that mean in numbers? That's about $399 million. And we're talking about not exceeding 40%. As we kind of planned out that debt service schedule, we're not only concerned about these projects, but we're concerned about the debt service that we're already repaying. We're concerned about the debt service plans, we have other projects, we have a wetland mitigation project coming up, we have some highway projects coming up, but also future projects, we're going to issue debt for highway into the future, we'll have other capital needs. So we want to make sure that we're including room for all of those projects as well. This also included the projects that we're talking about, it's not like one debt issue. We're looking at four debt issues over time to kind of accommodate this different type of scenario. And one of the reasons, we want to make sure that we're receiving the cash when the cash is needed and also that, you know, we might have multiple issuance expenses, but we're going to save on some of those interest payments too when we need this one. As we start planning for debt service schedules, one of the things that we want to look at is the immediate impact of the levy versus a gradual levy impact. The scenarios that we're going to talk about, both are based on an immediate levy impact. One of the things as you actually plan your debt schedules, the county can control kind of how we set up those repayment schedules and we can kind of step into the debt over the first five years and kind of increase those impact to a tax owner or taxpayer, or we can just kind of make the leap into the, what it's going to cost in terms of what are those tax targets are. The, the models that we're going to be talking about are, you know, an immediate leap. So I just wanted to point that out as well. The debt service scenarios also included the use of existing county resources for about $10 million. So just to put that out there. So this is our starting point and this is for phase one only. We talked about the master of the facility plan total, but this really is just on phase one. So our starting point is 2023. So our overall tax rate was $4.88, the debt service rate only was 54 cents. Now, we have other portions of taxes, those are listed out there, they still exist and they're still going to be there, but we're kind of focusing on these. For a median home value, for roughly $179,000, the cost to a taxpayer was about 100 or $870 on their tax bill for Portage County. So in order to start the estimate, I needed to look at 2024 and what would the impact for 2024 be without the facilities? So I estimated net new construction and operating levy at the same level that we had for 2023, EMS levy roughly the same amount. I included the healthcare center referendum exception for the full amount of the levy exception and I didn't make any other changes to things like Bridge Aid and property chargebacks because they're smaller dollar bills. So if we just went into 2024 with kind of our existing debt service plans, went out and borrowed for our highway projects like we had planned for, we're looking at roughly a $30 increase to what a taxpayer would have paid compared to 2023. So now we did the analysis of the downtown and the greenfield site. So for a downtown site, our debt service rate will increase to $1.19. What that means on a median home value of about $179,000, it's going to increase by $145 over 2023, not over the 2024, over 2025. And for a greenfield site, roughly it's going to increase $135. The one other thing that I just kind of want to point out in terms of debt service repayment, you know, we're talking about a debt service schedule over 20, 25 years, multiple issues. When we look at those schedules and the repayment, as equalized value will grow over time, the goal is that those tax rates are going to start to drop. And as we talked about those other phases, as those tax rates start to drop, that's when you're going to insert in those other phases of your project. So they won't always be at that level, but over the time, in order to include all the phases, you will be bringing them back up to a similar level as you have them.
So now, I think it's clear, recommendation is the phase one we've been describing in detail. The jail and the three-room courthouse, it addresses the priority statement, security and some operational inefficiencies that we're dealing with right now. The location, from a design and construction standpoint, both are viable. The location, from a design and construction standpoint, both are viable. Um, and, and that is a, that's a decision and that's a discussion that is going to be for the county board to weigh. We've done our best to outline pros and cons. We've tried to answer questions, but from a construction and design standpoint, both sites can work. So at this point, um, we have a little bit of closing and next steps. But this is really where we would invite any discussion or questions that want to happen before we wrap up. So do you want it?
Okay, we'll start with Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, hi. Uh, speaking from the perspective of having been on Transportation Supporting Committee for a couple terms. In your planning process, did you give much thought to, uh, the future of mobility and transportation in, uh, in the city-county area? By that, I mean, we, we just heard from, I'm kind of following up on the mayor's point about the large, uh, parking structure, okay? It seems that in the planning, you're, you folks are pretty much, uh, operating from the same paradigm that we have now through the last eight years, right? Personal automobile gets where you're going. Mass transit is virtually nonexistent. Uh, and there's no problem with the resources to move vehicles around, okay? But, um, having studied this stuff for the last twenty years since the Energy Fair went to, um, I think there's an urgent need in, uh, in this county, city, and state for a really massive build-out of mass transit and the option of reducing use of personal automobile or the need for personal automobile, uh, for a whole bunch of reasons. So have, have, did, did you do any blue-sky thinking on that topic at all?
Not to that level that you're discussing. We did talk about, um, current bus routes. And with the, uh, uh, this idea of a greenfield site somewhere not downtown, what that would mean to get bus routes adjacent and the need to work through that. Um, beyond that, and Jessica or Dwayne, please jump in if there's a better way to say this. But we were really using what I'll say the rules say for today to design the building for today. Now, I guess it's in, in an odd way to look at it. One of the benefits of a phased approach to a master plan is that if in twenty thirty-eight or whatever that year was, we don't need a parking garage. You don't build a parking garage. But if, with what we know and with what the, I'll say, the design rules of today are, if we built the full master plan, a parking garage would be a consideration that we would have to work through and, and I'll say rule out, um.
Well, just to follow up, and then I'll shut up. The, uh, current conditions that exist right now, in the event of a, let's say the greenfield site went up, you know, in the timeline you have. Uh, this is a tremendous burden on our poor folks, okay? Now, the downtown districts, uh, the four or five supervisor districts include a, a very large portion of poor folks. A lot of folks who cannot afford a personal automobile and are going to have some real mobility issues to get out to the industrial park. Um, you know, for a whole number of needs that they may have to, to visit with the court system and the, and the, and all of the law enforcement, uh, entities. So I think that, um, that, 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 that is a real constraint and problem that's got to be addressed some way. That's all.
Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
Couple of questions. First one, um, referring to Slide forty-seven, um, advantages and challenges to downtown site. Number four on the advantages of city support, is that, does that city support, has that come from the city council? Has that come from the mayor for the downtown site? The only discussion that I ever heard of city support or, or not support, um, is Sheriff Haga and Ryan Karnowski were having a conversation one day after a meeting in this room, and Mr. Karnowski said that there's no way the city will, would allow it built on a green site. That's the only time I've ever heard of a negative to a green site from anybody involved with the city. So where does that city support come? Has the council decided that? Is that something the mayor's decided that? Is that something their planning department has decided? Where was that decided?
That was comments made in conversations that we had had in a meeting, um, with three members. I have to look at my notes. I believe it was three members of the city that they supported the downtown site. Now, I think there's more discussion that could be had there. Um, what would their support be or not be for a greenfield? We don't know those answers.
And then the second question I add would maybe be a question for the sheriff. Um, on response time from a green site to most of the county versus a, a downtown site, especially with the potential business fifty-one lane reduction.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the response, the response time on the, uh, towards the interstate, of course, is going to be quicker. Um, but with this phase one design, it was the courts and the jail. Um, the L E C is actually not moving. So that was, uh, a little bit different.
I don't recall if that was, uh, Mr. Karnowski that said that to me. So Supervisor Keller. I, I'm just wondering, did I miss something about if we go to a green site, what goes on with existing county properties?
We've looked at that a little bit, uh, redevelopment opportunities. We've reached out to one developer, I'll say very quietly, to just understand, um, what could the value of this property be? It would obviously be up to the, the county to decide, uh, but there was, I'll say, interest in opportunities to redevelop this for other uses because of its location.
Well, I, I would think that somebody would be willing or excited about putting a corporate office or maybe a high-rise hotel, something, and we got some pretty, pretty nice river from Buick here.
The, in, in the, in the little bit of research that we did, there was interest, there's definitely interest in redeveloping this into something other than, um, a county campus. Yeah.
Supervisor Splinter.
Uh, you mentioned on your, on your recommendations that both, both sites are viable as construction costs. I don't see, and the downtown, from what I understood, it could be expanded, but it would be on a multi-level expansion versus, um, our, um, greenfield. You know, yeah. Our decisions as a county were hefty made in the fact that it was spending your own money. Say, I, but I won two billion dollars on a lottery today, and I decided I'm going to make them, I'm going to, I'm going to build a million-dollar house. And do I, like, do you want it downtown where I've got to be five stories high, my big mansion downtown? Or do I go out and I spread it out? That's where I'm, my gist is that I'd rather have forty, fifty acres to play with with a pond and whatever else out in the countryside. And we're thinking, you know, we've got, we've got to think fifty to a hundred years from now when we're all gone. Nobody's going to last that long. So we got to look back and, so the future generations will look back and said, and say, wow, they really had some foresight back then versus what adhered to the jail. Wow, they were really a bunch of rummies, you know? So, uh, we got to think, think in the future and, and where are we going to be at fifty years from now? And are they going to be a lot more, it's going to be difficult to, to handle this expansion downtown or on the greenfield. So I, this, that's just a consideration I think we all have to think about. And the two-story jail, I'd like to know what the sheriff thinks about that, if he's on yet.
Mike, you got a comment about the two-story jail?
Yeah, um, I looked at the concepts, not the design because it's not complete, but in regards to the staffing for the two-story, um, with our shipping budget, we were able to, uh, accommodate that. Now, that's not to say if we had to build up and do another pod for three hundred or, or in the future, then of course your operations cost is going to be, uh, drastically increasing.
Supervisor Marisi.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, just a couple of questions on impact of the people who access these services or government services where, um, people come here, they come to us to access them, whether it's permitting or court services or health and human services and whatnot. Uh, I guess I'm wondering if there's been a cost-benefit analysis of having your services in a downtown central location that are accessible by many means of transportation, as Supervisor Gifford explained, uh, and, and moving them from the, from the city center to and out, you know, another location, say the town of Stockton perhaps, or, uh, into the town of Hull. You know, as, as annexing property is going to be the only option that we have available here. Whether the city will do that is another, you know, thing that we have to contend with. So I, I wonder about, about that cost-benefit analysis in terms of people and all the access to services and who those people are. So we're talking about a population of people that, um, perhaps are a little bit lower income, right? We're talking about people who are offenders. Uh, if I looked at the, the stats recently, and the downtown, uh, districts in particular has the highest rate of offenders and per capita in, in our community. You know, those, those people are accessing our diversional services. Those are the people on ankle bracelets. Those are the people who are, uh, at home and still, hopefully still working while, uh, while having to deal with ramifications of their decisions and luckily in regard to the law. So we have a cost-benefit analysis of like, what the hell is going to impact us? How is this going to impact downtown businesses? Right? What happens when you remove three hundred employees out of the downtown of Stevens Point and you move them out to the east side of town? Right now, a lot of those people are going to downtown restaurants, businesses, bars, shops, and they're getting things on their lunch break. They're getting things after work. And they're, uh, stopping at local grocery stores downtown. So how, how are we factoring our costs here? How, you know, how, how do we put a number on those things? On the east side of town, all, all I know is there's, there's maybe one or two mom and pop shops out there, right? The rest of them are all big box and, and, and they're not mom and pops. I'll say that much. That money is going elsewhere. That money is vacating our county. So I really would want, uh, wonder about that. And then also, sorry, the, in, in regards to the offenders and people who are being monitored, uh, having them monitored by the sheriff's department and the Stevens Point P D is a benefit to the people of Portage County, right? They have quick access to these folks should they happen to reoffend quickly. So I guess I threw a lot out there. But how are we going to deal with all that? These things, I know change is tough.
So I'll, I'll hit the, I'll hit the ones that, um, that I recall. If I forget one, let me know. Um, and then for the rest of our team, if we need more detail, we'll jump in. So the, the broad answer to your question, and you'll see it on a couple of upcoming slides, is we've allotted up, uh, about six weeks here of time. Basically, March twenty-first, the March Board meeting, is what we're using as the line in the sand for a vote to move forward. Between now and March twenty-first, that time is meant to research specific concerns such as uh, analysis and studies that, that would get brought up at a committee level or at some one-on-one meetings that we're going to propose. So we don't, we have not looked at every one of, of those different ideas. Um, we've discussed the idea from a transportation issue that if a greenfield site is desired, right, we need to start discussing what is the technique of applying to go out there. Um, from the, the idea of what is the, this, I'll say, the negative effect of moving the county out of the jail. We've had the conversation enough to also what is the positive effect of a redevelopment opportunity with a, a, you know, fill in the blank, whether it's a corporate headquarters or whether it's a condominium or things like that. Now, we admittedly stop short of spending time and resources and energy analyzing each of those uh, because we wanted to know what are the points that are important to the county board that are going to help make the decision? Because other, otherwise we would have, you know, we could analyze it to death on every aspect of it, and we want to do what's right. So it's somewhat of a, a generalized answer to some pretty specific questions.
Supervisor, can I just follow up one thing? Uh, I guess part of that would be what is the, what is going to be the city's cost for a Portage County decision, right? Because if we make a decision here as this body to build down here, it's going to have an impact on the city. We're going to have to relocate a lot of utilities and things like that. We make a decision, put it on the east side of town, but there's currently nothing available, you know, because we're going to be in a greenfield site. It's, um, it's going to be on, you know, farm field.
Farm field.
Right? So what, what is that going to cost the city? And I don't, I don't know if I'm thinking of this correctly, but are city folk getting taxed twice for this then? We're getting hit by the county and by the city for the decision that the county made? Or is this going to be lumped into one cost? That's, I don't understand that part. So anything to help me out would be great. You don't have to answer today.
Yeah, I was going to say that one, I couldn't go into detail on that unless.
The cost we assume, that we had some assumed values, but.
Sure.
To bring that to the, to the site.
The extension there, you said this.
How's this getting paid?
Yeah.
You know, work that through.
Yeah.
And I guess I look at it, you know, to some point, we've got a building in ten thirty-nine, uh, that's got costs associated with demolition of it.
Yes.
That would offset some of the land cost or land purchase. Uh, you know, I'm just going through some different scenarios also that if we were on that green space, ten thirty-nine could potentially be sold and put back on the tax roll. Which, this is in a TIF district as well to help pay the TIF, so.
Well, there, there's, can I add one comment on that? Is, there's a lot of, um, next steps that are most efficiently done with a direction towards a site. And, and that is kind of, that, that's part of the punchline that, you know, we're leading up to is we could move into schematic design for downtown and a greenfield. We could study transit to no end for downtown and a greenfield. But we're not going to recommend that to you because you're, you're paying twice for what you should be paying for once. But to get to the once comes down to the location decision. So what do we need to do to help with that?
Supervisor Barry Chakowski, then Supervisor Weaver.
Thank you, Mister Chair. And I'm not sure whether this question is with the chair or the entire body or Mayor, Mayor Weesa. Supervisor Marisi said in his statement that we would be losing out on people coming for permits. And I'm not certain whether anybody in the city districts pays for any permits to the county. I sit on planning and zoning, and I don't remember anybody from the city of Stevens Point ever coming. The counting for a zoning permit being that that would probably be one of the few permits of any negligible, negligible cost. Does the city people come to the county for building permits?
It's not just building permits. They, every single day, there are people that come in and think they have to go to a city office. We have to direct it to the county offices. I have to assume that there are people coming to county offices that get directed to the city offices. You lose that.
So you're saying that separating, separating the two might be a good thing so that they knew where they needed to go or?
No, exactly the opposite. Someone comes in and says you have to go to the county to pay for this. Now they have to drive all the way out to the east side of town or wherever this green site happens to be. Uh, or if someone comes out.
Or maybe they've driven all the way in here when they could have been out there.
That could very well be, yeah.
I thought.
Supervisor Weaver.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I, I heard the idea that you would be looking for a final vote essentially from the board as to what the location would be March twenty-first. That's less than sixty days away. Um, I think there are significant questions that have been presented about what the consequences of moving these facilities outside of our downtown. Um, respectfully, I, I appreciate all of the work that you guys have done thus far. It's taken you ten months. But it seems to be really addressing more just the straight economic issues, which are clearly important. But I, I think to have an expectation that we. But I think to have an expectation that we would be in a position to make an informed decision by March twenty first, given some of these questions seems unrealistic in my opinion.
Mayor Weesa.
So several things. The reason I spoke up earlier is because I don't think this proposal includes all of the relevant information. Parking was the most obvious. Right? Can't see you needing a parking structure unless you're adding staff and we already heard adding staff is bad. So why would we add staff that requires a forty five million dollar parking structure at some point when there's plenty of surface area available? The costs seem to be one of the biggest concerns. The ease of construction seems to be another one of the biggest concerns, but we're losing, as several people alluded to, a lot of the intrinsic values that happen from coexisting municipal services in a very similar space. What I'm hearing is that the county board right now, at least a few people, want cheap and easy. That's the problem we had with a couple of the other buildings, as you recall. Cheap and easy is not the best solution. Based on what Jenny showed me, we're looking at what, a ten dollar difference on an average home in the county from having a downtown site versus a green space site? Which again, you lose a lot of that intrinsic value. I mean, we're taking up farmland. I hope someone's not pushing this to take competitive farmland off the tax rolls. But you're losing that potential for growth on the twenty or thirty or forty acre site that you choose outside. That takes money directly out of the county taxpayers' pockets, takes money out of my pocket as a city taxpayer because these sites are going to still remain off the tax roll until someone redevelops them. If they redevelop it. We've already been told that several of these buildings are obsolete. If we can't repurpose them, how do you expect someone else to repurpose? As Chairman, we're talking about a decision as Michael mentioned on the twenty first as to a location. April or May of twenty fifteen, the county board passed a resolution. Says you're going to build a new center and you're going to do it downtown. To the best of my recollection, that has not been repealed. So I submit that you already have direction from the county board. You're going to choose to ignore that. And I want a list of other county board directives that you're going to choose to ignore. That's still on the books. I would encourage you to consider all of the options and all of the things that are going to be affected. It's not just the fact that you have a cheaper, easy site out there. You have people who utilize the services downtown. You have the coexisting and I'm telling you every single day, someone comes in asking where to go. The general public doesn't know which court they need to be at. Do I need to be at circuit court? Do I need to be drug court, veterans court, municipal court? They're going to be driving back and forth trying to figure that out, creating frustration, frustration. Our job first and foremost is customer service. We should be looking out for the taxpayers and their ability to use our services efficiently. You lose all of that. Then you have the burden of these buildings that are here now. What are you going to do with them? Great. I hope you win the lottery and you can buy them all and turn them into something cool. A high rise hotel would be great. But I don't see that. And the more the buildings sit vacant, the more dilapidated they become. The maintenance on them is going to get neglected and they're going to get into further disrepair. Who wants to see that there downtown? I certainly don't. I don't think any of our business owners do. And I don't think any of the people that live in the area do. So make sure you're looking at everything, not just how easy it is and how cheap it is to build somewhere else. We've got the space downtown. We've got a directive from county board to build it downtown and I would encourage you to follow the direction your board is off.
I'm writing down my notes so I don't forget all of my stuff here and be able to answer them.
It's recorded.
Well, I want to be able to answer them now though, so. The coexisting part of you talked about a lot of it. The only ones that are moving is the LEC and the courts. So the Sheriff's Department will be here. The Sheriff's Department would be here. The rest of the staff, other than the related services, would be here. My office would be here. We get all the people that come to ask the questions would continue to be here. I know the parking ramp is something that you brought up, but it was one of the questions that was pushed out, I think, in twenty forty. It was one of the last questions, but for us not to look into the future of what could possibly be here and have an option with parking, because as we all know, parking is tight down here. It's human nature to be parking as close as you can to something. And I know that we have some staff that has some parking permits to do just that very thing. So it's human nature in the twelve or fourteen hundred that are downtown. To me, it's irrelevant because I'm not going to park downtown to come over here. I get upset when I have to park on the other side to come into my office. And I think about the other people that are coming in there that are older or it's raining or today it was eleven bowl in making that trek or it's slippery or whatever. So in as far as the resolution, yes, we have a resolution that is on there. That would be one of the things if the direction of this board is to change the location of it would also follow with a new resolution. And as you know, resolutions can be changed every time there's a new election. There's nothing that is approved. And you said that whatever was the cheapest, and I don't know if I look at it as the cheapest, but I look at it more or less that it is whatever is being a good steward of the tax dollars and being respectful to that. So again, with that, with the questions, I'll start with Supervisor Sike and then Supervisor Keller.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Couple comments and then I have a question for the mayor. So to Supervisor Weaver's comment of you making the vote in March being too soon. There have been people throughout this board and throughout this community that have been studying this issue for the last twenty years. I don't think we need to take another twenty years to come up with a vote if we should or shouldn't. And to Mayor Weesa, are you stating here tonight that if this board decides to go with a green site? Give any site at all, because this is a lot of money. Are you stating that you will not support a green site and work with the county to make that happen if we should decide to go with that? Is that what you're saying? If you won't support it, you won't work with us?
I'm telling you as a duly elected, you want to answer?
Yes or no, please.
Okay, I'll give you an answer. As a duly elected representative of over twenty five thousand people and a third of the county's budget, I do not intend to support a green site. I do not intend to support any site that's not downtown. That being said, you've got eleven people that make that decision. Just like you have twenty five county board supervisors that have really already decided to have it downtown. So as Chairman Haya said, everything's on the table.
Oh, no, thank you.
No.
You just said.
I did not say no.
Support it if it wasn't.
I'm not supporting anything that's not downtown.
And that's what I asked. You personally, as the mayor?
Yes.
Will not support this if it's not downtown?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Keller, then Supervisor Pataki.
Thank you. My question is kind of we can kind of tie it together. So we're going to vote on sites within a couple of months, so they've obviously kind of zeroed in on some. But do we have a temperature of the property owners, how they feel about, are they eager to sell us some property? Or are we taking it from them? Then how, the mayor's kind of mentioned this, but I don't think he's giving me an answer. How do the business owners feel? Do we have their temperature? Do we want this downtown? Do we want it further out? Which one makes life better for them? All right? And then my last question, it is something to be considered. It doesn't matter where this site is. When I was running, I haven't received a call since I was elected, but when I was running, I received several. And one of the questions being asked a lot was, do we intend to lease jail cells in order to help fund this? And if so, how is that going to impact downtown? How is it going to impact the edge of town? Because I got to tell you, what I've noticed is leasing jail cells invites a criminal element into your community. So the season I come and visit, you look at the drug problems in Wood County compared to the drug problems in Portage County. I'm not looking forward to an increase in that kind of activity. And I'm sure the sheriff could enlighten me as to where that.
So for the first part, you had asked about the temperature of the people.
Property owners.
Property owner. And I will let them answer that question, but one of the, one of the comments you had said or made is and or are we going to take it? Myself, I would never support us taking anybody's land. And I think there's probably quite a few others here that wouldn't use condemnation to do that, nor do I know if we would have them right.
I just want to go on the record as saying I'm not afraid of that domain.
I wouldn't want it or in that domain, I wouldn't want to look at either one of those. And I don't think anybody else really does either. The other one you had asked about was the opportunity to lease jail cells out or to use that. Now, I, as part of this process, I think that because we, in the past, we may have when we were talking three, four hundred beds. But I think with what we're looking at here going forward, it's something that may be on the table down the road, but I don't know if there was necessarily on any, any discussions of it or looking into it. Our main focus was to try and figure out where we're going to build it and what it's going to look like, how we're going to pay for it. I believe. And then what was really, you had a third one here to downtown.
Businesses.
Businesses to downtown. Do they prefer we stay downtown so it doesn't cause congestion?
One of the things is I sat here and then I listened to the comments and I, it was either Supervisor Morrissey or Supervisor Weaver talking about the downtown and the impact that we have. And I, I was going to ask the executive if it'd be possible for us to do a small survey of the people that we have here in the downtown and have four or five questions on it to ask those people whether they go to lunch downtown, if they do, how often it is, if they have their own car when they come down. But we can figure out about four or five questions to ask them through staff and try and get some numbers because when somebody makes that, it's somebody's opinion and I'd like to make sure that we have the facts.
Thank you.
And by doing that, we could, we could get the data or try and collect data to say whether that is factual or it's an opinion. Same as the comment that was made on the county board floor about we put too many people in jail. So after that comment was made, was it was somebody's opinion? Because I went and had staff check it and find out what the facts. So I was wondering if we could find out a mechanism and work with the executive to see if, if we could do something like that as well.
Chairman, I mean, I mean, the mayor may ask these times due to. I was hearing speculation. I still had the floor here. So I was hearing assumptions and I would like something that tells me.
Right, facts, so.
Can I answer on the intent to lease?
Yes.
We're looking at two hundred beds. You take the eight percent, that's a hundred and sixty beds. Right now, we're probably about a hundred and fifty nine. Don't have much room.
Yeah. Supervisor Pataki's been waiting and then Supervisor Weaver and Morrissey.
I think we've all heard the statement that we should be sensible, all cities have a campus concept. Yet the campus council go with the city of Stevens Point because their police department moved from downtown Stevens Point off the Michigan Avenue. That's not central county, I don't believe. Another thing, the Public Safety Committee of the county, the Law Enforcement Center being in Stevens Point right now. And if it remains here, will we build a new building? I worry about the deputies and I worry about the people living in the city of Stevens Point or visiting the city of Stevens Point. Again, I know at least two serious accidents where we had an officer who received a disability because it was a serious accident on Main and Division. And I know of another accident that was, it was a fatality. It was in the city of Stevens Point. So our officers have to drive through the city all the time. If we looked up at a green field, I think you would eliminate that.
Supervisor Weaver, then Supervisor Morrissey.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. First off, I appreciate your point about getting the facts. I think that's always a prudent course of action. I want to just respond, there was a comment made suggesting that some of the concerns that have been raised have been studied for twenty years. I obviously haven't been here twenty years. So this is actually the first opportunity that as a board member I'm getting information. So again, if, if these, I guess, issues have been studied and resolved, it probably shouldn't be that difficult to get us the information. But at this point, I don't really think that I have enough information to be in a position to make an informed decision on the issue of where the facilities would be located. I haven't reached a conclusion one way or the other, but would like more information. And I'm certainly not going to need twenty more years, but some additional information would be helpful. And I have a hard time seeing how these things could be resolved by March twenty first.
So again, the team put that up as trying to set some, some dates and some parameters to set some guidelines.
Sure.
And I can appreciate a new person, you know, taking this on and trying to understand the issues. But we have to, we have to find a date. And I don't know what that is, but we have to come to a conclusion and we have to be able to move on or what I've been talking about for the twenty years continues to perpetuate. So I don't know at what point we can get you all the information. That's the whole purpose of this meeting is a good start to get you as much as you can and any other new supervisors and answer any questions, but also so that you can see the people and know who to direct those questions to so you can get those answers as quickly as you can. And hopefully they can keep track of them because if you're asking them, chances are somebody else might be asking them and then they can get that out to the rest of us and to those questions as well. But we got to find a date and I don't know, or even if you know at what point you're going to be ready to vote or ready to make that decision. But we've got to find that date, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not advocating that we kick it out forever. But again, I'll be ready to vote when, when you give me the information and could address some of these questions if it brings.
So with that, I think I stated at the last county board is to make sure that everybody pays attention and reads as much as they can, asks as many questions as they can and of staff and stuff to try and take this on. For the rest of you, it's unfortunate, yeah, you have to, you have to catch up, I guess, to some point. But there's Don, Stan, myself, Genie, she's not here. Mr. Madine, there's a few of us that have been here quite a long time. So to some point, a lot of this process was a little redundant, but we, because they've heard it so many times at so many different versions. But we've got, we've got to find out what the answer is and we've got to, we've got to, we've got to start making choices because I think I was in on a capital improvement meeting with our facility director and the rest of them and I kept talking about, well, we've got this on the docket. We talked about that. Well, that's on hold because we don't know if we're going to build a new building. This is, I said, this is a terrible way to run a large business when we don't know what our answers are and we keep pushing all these other items out that need repair to the point where they're obsolete. So Supervisor Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I probably am like the last generation that knows what to kick the cannons, right? I actually played it and we do not afford to play this game anymore. I agree. It's going to come down to location, location, location. And then the services that we provide for our community and how we provide them. So I support the project overall, but we really got to have a hard, hard conversation about that location. If we can get those questions answered that I proposed and kind of these cost benefit analysis and some, some numbers. Granted, I know they're amorphous. We need to know how these things are, how those issues are going to be impacted. In terms of public input, Mr. Chair, I agree. Some sort of survey would be great. We did have informational sessions about this topic a few years back when it was proposed that we had we're going to build a new building. I know they were not very popular with the public, but if we can do a better job of outreach and getting people involved with this decision making and framing in a way that is like, hey, we're at what location? and frame it in a way that is like, hey, where, what location do you want? Where do you want these services that you utilize? Where do you want to be traveling to? So a survey that is professional would be, I think, more appropriate than just asking, like, maybe the executive to do like a survey monkey. I think we have to have a professional person framing these discussion questions and to ask staff and the outlying community about, you know, what the services they're accessing. So I would highly recommend that we actually spend a little money to get real data, not just the data we want to hear. And then also, in terms of public input, if we're talking about location, we can do that very clearly without throwing a dollar figure on things. So why not actually ask the people in referendum question which location they prefer? I know that it's not a popular thing and it's where things go to die. But if you put a two hundred and fifty million dollar price tag on anything, it's dead. It doesn't matter where it is, it's dead. But if you ask the people where they want these services to be housed, you have a win-win situation, right? They will support the project because they have some buy-in into what we are going to be providing, knowing that we have to have this question answered within the next couple of years or we're down the can or kicking the can down the road again.
We don't have a couple of years. We've got to do something.
I know, exactly. But if you get buy-in from the public, if you get buy-in from the public that they want this location out east, up north, in downtown, wherever, and they give us an answer, we know what to do, right? But if you're asking what they want to spend two hundred and fifty million dollars, this is project goodbye.
I didn't hear a two hundred and fifty million dollar price tag on it.
Yeah, phase one was one sixty-five to one seventy-five, just for clarity.
It's still double of seventy-six million.
Still a lot of the couple here.
Yeah.
So to Mr. Weaver's point that, you know, to make this decision and the rest of you, this is a very complicated issue. And we have had open, open public meetings, the sheriff's probably still on, and I was at a couple of those. We had poor attendance. Maybe the next time we have to have free beer. I don't know what we've got to do to get them to make it down.
I agree.
So Supervisor Dodge, you've got the comment?
Yes. I'd like for people to consider the operational costs in both the green and the downtown areas. It's pretty clear that operations will be far more expensive in multi-story buildings. And I think we've seen what operational costs can do to a county entity over time. So you might like the downtown proposal, but it seems to me that over time, and if we're looking at fifty years, and it'll be at least fifty years that these facilities will be used, operations is a huge consideration. Thank you.
Supervisor Gobek.
What's the timeline for all of this right now? Are we going to go to committee like in the board-ish?
I don't know.
To get a resolution going and then it tends to come more to us in March?
So we've got, we actually have a little bit of, so this is the plan next, right? From our perspective. And then is, you know, committee level discussions. We're available to attend as required. We also wanted to put out the offer out there for just one-on-one conversations or small group meetings. That's something that we've offered before. There's been limited intake on it, but I think now there's more information and hopefully questions. So we understand that March twenty first is a time that's going to come up really quickly. But we also wanted to put that date out there because we needed to base our schedules on something. We needed to base our costs on something, and we needed to be able to have brackets, I guess, if you will, around it. That date is something that we picked and it can be moved as requested, you know, and decided by the board. The February board meeting, we're assuming that we're going to be attending in person with discussions again. And then what we basically said was at the March meeting, that was our assumed voting date, so.
What's that? Suzanne. The other hand, the other hand, Bill?
No.
Supervisor Oki, you have a comment?
Oh, I do just have a brief comment. I'm sorry you can't see me, but I'm going to springboard just a bit off of the public buy-in. Constituents in my district are understanding the need for a new law enforcement campus. He, however, that looks in the long run, their concern is location. And I think that when you get public buy-in and at whatever level, even if it's just at the location, then the price tag doesn't fight so hard. So I am for public input in terms of location. Thank you.
Supervisor Madine.
I'd like to have the individuals from BWBR increase my comfort level, you folks. We approved the organization on April eighth of two thousand and eighteen, two months shy of three years ago. At that time, Mark Legatus, a principal, was there. And he meant that he would be an active member in the whole transition because there was a number of public meetings that he was at. There was Rick Gabriel who was there, and he has his credentials AIA, L E E D, A P, B D plus C. Mark Legatus, AIA, Thomas Hanley was there at all these public meetings. So he had some background on the kinds of things that we're discussing today. And he has AIA, L E E D, A P. Two of these individuals are principally within the firm. Now, first time I have met one of you. I was introduced to you, and you would be the person who would be speaking to us from our agenda. And your credential is AIA and senior market project planner. I don't know if that's a credential that really can do the design. Know that Duane Jones is here today and has AIA, at least one of the credentials that the other three members had. I do have some concerns about, maybe you could increase my comfort level on that because I don't even see the credentials that we were given or the authority within the firm as senior architects to perform the work for us. Maybe you could help increase my comfort level, otherwise I have a major concern.
May I answer? We, similar findings as your owners rep. I will tell you this, Mark Legatus retired.
I know that now.
Okay.
I'm asking them.
Gotcha. And I'll let you answer, but we did a vetting just on the county's behalf and following through on the quality of the firm. So I'll let them answer to their credential, but we had the same thing that you guys did. We found it's sufficient.
Yeah, thank you. So my name is Jessica Berg. I have been with BWBR for almost seventeen years, working hand in hand with Mark Legatus that entire time in the secure environments, corrections realm of things. So yes, Mark did retire this year, and it is the intent of the office that I'm to take his place. And so I have been working on the Portage County project since two thousand and eighteen, kind of behind the scenes and also with the study and the master plan. So I've been involved with the project since then. And I'm very happy to share my resume and additional information with you. And then, of course, Dewberry is our team.
We've got him. We understand the comfort level with him.
Okay.
He has a separate firm from yourself.
Yeah, yeah. So Mark and I have been working hand in hand together for seventeen years and really, you know, have worked as a team in that time.
And your credential as an architect?
Yes, I'm an architect. Yes. Yep.
Our firms are, by the way, in an over five-year commitment to this project and to team it, you know, together. You know, basically a fifty-fifty split of this design effort and seeing this all the way to construction.
Yeah, and I'm happy to give you additional information.
My point was that we had a number of public meetings in the last three years that all three of those gentlemen have been at. And you have not been at those and have a little bit of a not quite the information that they had that we have been, has been presented tonight that might have been helpful for you in your advising our representative.
Thank you. Don, you had it hand up earlier, or you're good? Supervisor Chakowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. It was referenced earlier, the May of two thousand and fifteen vote to have the location be downtown. That was a fourteen to eleventh vote. It's going to take seventeen votes to move this project forward. Because it has to have a two-thirds super majority to be financed.
Two-thirds. Bill.
That's how. Finance.
Yeah, right, to finance it.
What was the vote against you?
Fourteen to eleven. On the May, it's May eighteenth to two thousand and fifteenth. And maybe I'm wrong at two-thirds.
Three-quarters.
So it's going to take a three-quarter vote, so it's going to take a little more now.
So, yeah, so, you know, the only, the only resolution that you need the three-quarter on is an intent to borrow in your debt service-related resolutions. And that you do need a three-quarter, and that is statutory.
My apologies.
So. If we're talking about a direction for moving forward, and I guess we want to make sure we hang, hung a price on that, it wouldn't make any sense. So Supervisor Splinter.
There's no saying, I know saying, you can have paralysis by analysis. And I'm kind of getting that sense that they're giving us some good figures, good information, and then we're starting to go down these little rabbit holes of how many people go downtown for lunch, how many people park here, how many people do this and that, which is good. But you have to remember, when you talk about surveys or referendums, all of us sitting here now represent, give or take, fifty people or so, twenty-eight hundred people, twenty-eight hundred taxpayers. And it's, and we have to have, we should be putting our due diligence and asking questions. I mean, our space properties committee is really well-attended. That would be one place to come, asking Don for information. He's been involved in four, five, six meetings a month. And he's really the expert on our place and properties committee. But remember, we've been elected to represent twenty-eight hundred people. And I'd like to hear from my constituents, and I hope your constituents chime in on it too and give a little example. But we should be taking the lead and making a vote one way or another. Now, whether it's March, I don't know. But again, you could start going down the road of, well, no, we don't know about this, we don't know about that. We'll put it down another month, another month. Every month that goes by is an increase in building costs. Or, and within six months, you could have millions of dollars definitely. So let's do our due diligence, we're attending this, they're giving us all this information. And my gosh, if you have a question and if you haven't asked it, ask it now. Because this is where we can get the churning of information and having people feel good about where they want to, where they want to vote. Because the owners reps have to have a direction, they can't go two places at once. So let's get it down, make it where you feel good, get some input from your constituents if you have to. And I hope they, hope they give you input. Because again, you are representing them. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to give everybody notice now that I'm going to end this at eight o'clock, which is a half hour from now, if it was that long, but I don't want anybody to be surprised by that. So, you know, and part of the reason of this many, to your point, Supervisor Splinter, part of this reason for this meeting is again to get everybody caught up and a point to kick it off. And we have our local media that is here, and hopefully they'll get the word out there for us. And then if your phones are going to ring, they're going to ring, and the questions are going to come out. But if staff and Don and our people that are hired aren't getting questions, I guess I'll assume that, that everybody's questions have been answered, and then we'll start moving forward to try and figure out what that direction is going to be. So unless I hear differently, that's kind of how I'm going to be gauging what's going to happen and when it'll happen. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, a follow-up on what I said before, but now I'm talking to the board and not the consultant. In the next sixty or ninety days, whatever, the board has to come to some decision on the greenfield or downtown, which strongly urge the board to go for downtown. And I'll back that up with something I referenced earlier with things I learned at the energy fair twenty years ago, is that the era of urban sprawl and big build-out of the suburbs and everybody motoring around is going to come to a close. And we're at the beginning of that. The resource constraints going forward are just not going to permit kind of infinite greenfield building we think is possible. The other thing is that they probably heard me obsess about the demographic changes going on, right? And the fact of the need for a county such a portage to attract in the new young workforce of tomorrow, you can have forty, fifty years from now, the folks that'll be retiring at that point. The demographic change is that the younger generations, first of all, don't have the money to be buying new homes, buying new cars. They're in a whole different constraint situation than we were. We're all bloomers, we all have old vehicles.
I want to stick to the construction down here, whether it's on the green space.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the point is, this board needs to put on our visionary cap and think about of the future, what the city of the future is going to look like. And it's going to look a lot more concentrated, local, walkable, bikeable, and bus-riding. So let's stick with the downtown side. Thank you.
Supervisor Peterson, we haven't heard from you here. I want to mirror like Supervisor Maresi and Supervisor Weaver being new to this too. I think as we look into the accessibility to, you know, major happenings through those justice center in the county. But the other thing is, if it was in a green space, I think what would help us make our decision is if we could kind of pinpoint a little bit more of a site. You know, we've got this site pinpointed, but if we could pinpoint other ones possibly.
And I think that presents somewhat of a problem too. Because if we don't control the land or know where the land is, or, you know, or that's the direction, drive the price up, who knows, there could be a lot of things that are associated with that. So that's why it's just a green space at this time.
That's correct. That's correct. We can't, we, Tiger can't go out and represent and say, hey, want top thirty acres here? You know, we can't do that without guys telling us to.
Who else do we have over here? Anybody else that hasn't spoken, Supervisor Lattick?
I've been quite like a mouse here, but.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused about the assumptions on the pricing because I would assume they can put three dollars per foot. I know the deal of construction has a lot of concrete, a lot of steel in it, and there's a lot of special things. But it looks like it's over nine hundred dollars a square foot for doing the jail, being a hundred and seventy billion dollars with under eighty thousand square foot. Is that reasonable? What I'm missing here?
So we're like, are you talking management team? Talk through kind of some of the assumptions with their pricing that was.
But sorry, one thing, remember, these are all in numbers. I mean, we're buying.
Oh, but it makes a difference because we're trying to calculate, you know, what our volume is going to be and our tax rate is going to be. So you'd like to have something, I mean, if we're thinking nine hundred and twenty bucks a square foot, and it's really five hundred, that's a huge difference.
Yeah.
Pointing.
Can I just add too, as I answer this, the numbers that I gave tonight, I mean, we're. Can I just add too, as I, as they answer this, the numbers that I gave tonight, I mean, we really need to think about concept too. As their numbers get more well defined, the financial modeling also gets more well defined too. I don't want anybody to think that what I presented and what, you know, we kind of saw the assumptions on is, is the number. I mean, it's to give you perspective, who pays and the numbers we're talking about, but we will be continuing refining and providing.
Well, I always like to say we're painting with a big brush right now. Bill, do you have a comment to add to that?
Hi, Bill Spleen, Senior Pre-Command Manager. So I looked at the numbers. So the overall project budget that we shared today was a combination of the jail and the courthouse. And then it's also site costs and then owner costs that Tegra adds on top of that. So when you're talking about just the jail square footage, hundred and six thousand square feet, it comes out to about seven hundred and sixty five dollars a square foot for the jail itself. And then you have additional courthouse costs on top of that. But there is tons of different assumptions that go into that project, right? What, what type of skin do you have on the outside of the building? What does the final shape look like? Because as you saw, they're putting up block diagrams. And we would love to build a square building because they're, they're cheaper and less costly, but it's typically not how it works out. There's going to be a lot of extra skin that goes on a building. So that's why you put a big range on the project for all the assumptions that we made throughout the design process. So it kind of seven sixty five is that middle, middle of the road cost. And then the range goes within that of that. And we've also compared it to some of the other recent jail projects and compared it with Dewberry's, BWBR's experience recently. And it's, it's in line, it's looking to see kind of across the country as well.
Okay, I just had one other comment. You know, I think so you have thrills are a little bit of a thinking about who wants to go to lunch and wants to buy a restaurant town under lunch break and things like that. I know a lot of the people that in either one of these facilities, either you do, either eat at their desk or if they eat in one of the conference rooms, they have a half hour. They're not going to go very far. And I realize there's other people coming and going, maybe in and out of the city public building. But really, when it comes down to it, we need to make sure that our intent here is to build a safe and efficient operation for our jail, our support system, our law enforcement. And we shouldn't be worrying about who's riding the bus, who's riding the bike and things like that. I think, I think we're getting a little far away with our intent with here.
So. So that's all I have to say for right now.
Supervisor Weaver.
I, I have to admit, I, I think that suggested we should ignore those issues. And I, I don't think we can just ignore them, but I think you're putting too much on us. I, I actually think that the notion that it's as simple as where people are going to lunch. I, I think that, that may not be the case. I think that was an example used. I was raising the more general concern that it does not appear that we've done any studies to evaluate what the consequences would be of moving the facility out of downtown. That's all.
Okay, so Ethan said out of downtown is still within a city city's point.
I understand that.
Four miles.
Keep the, keep the comments directed to the chair, please. Anybody else?
Four miles, Dave.
Thank you.
Four of them.
Appreciate it, Benny. With some respect. Anybody else?
Anybody from any of the entities? Anybody online? Don, do you have anything?
No, just if, if Mike has any more questions. So.
Fully seven thirty five.
It's gotten early, but I'm glad, you know, I get on that. We'd like to talk.
Yeah, it's been a long night. And, and I think, you know, these, we're trying to consolidate and be simple here at the end. And I don't hear anybody disagreeing with, are you going to build? But that's just whatever. So I'll let you guys decide. But here's what we want, you know, to, to keep this thing going. Are you going to build? What are you going to build? We've obviously as a team seen and witnessed and worked with the sheriff and the judge and others. You know, who are in your county to come to a recommendation. So I, I believe we're very close to that. We'll follow a few things and we'll, we'll tweak. Mike was just saying to me here too, it's not like you're going to see this hundred and seventy five minute, hundred and sixty five minute, that's it. These guys are working tirelessly to find efficient, efficiencies, I should say, in their design. So I mean, we are driving to get the most efficiency, not driving to, to just get you a project. It is going to be a good quality builder. Just wanted to state that, whatever the project is. Three is the most debate we've heard tonight. It's where are you going to build? So that's what's laid out in, in front of you supervisors. And, you know, that's, that's what's coming at you. So in closing, I mean, our presentation was sixty minutes, but you know, with conversation, we're at about two and a half. So we really appreciate that. I think we had an over under going. I think Chris, we owe you lunch. You're right, we'll all need a lunch with Mike.
Yeah.
Talk highly of you. And when I say we, I guess I mean, I, I mean this whole body, right? We, we understand what you have, you understand. And we understand what you want and you desire. And we understand why this project's important. There's a lot of debating in this room, so you're obviously passionate about it. So it's important to you as, and as the city. So we, I would say Mike and I and our team are here to help you in any manner. And we would take your personal calls through Chris will set it up. We'll be here again in February and March. So please take advantage of that. I think we are completed on our slot.
Supervisor Barry Chakowski.
Mr. Chair, if you would please to thank the people who paid to come and present all this information to you today. Evening, we certainly appreciate this.
Oh, Judge Baker, go ahead.
Hey, I just sorry about that. Hey, I just want to say thank you to everybody for coming tonight, participating. It's been a really lively, engaging debate and I appreciate everyone's attention to the needs. I, I won't speak to the jail. We all know that the jail is so important here. But when it comes to the courthouse, I can't tell you how much everybody in the courthouse wants a safe, secure place to work and how important that is to all of the staff, including myself. And to have everybody here tonight and to have everybody participating in this engage, this really engaging debate really sends such a strong message that you folks really care and are taking this very seriously. And I appreciate that and I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, I guess Supervisor Pataki, guys are going to go to eight o'clock, aren't you?
You called, Mr. Chair. You all received this New York Journal and you see the place that you have, it's twenty nine, twenty five million. Well, you had one hundred and seventy five million now. I would, I would like to ask, why didn't you get just the two, and our thanks to the February board meeting, we've come up with all the phrase things that we had. And I know this is two thousand and nine. I know we just talked about Billy and you. You were right here, we mentioned that the jail was obsolete, it was obsolete in nineteen ninety when we built this damn thing. I mean, it was supposed to be enough room for double munking and the engineer or the architect screwed up by putting the piping inside the shell. Whereas we could only have single munking. So anyway, we, if you would do that now, so the whole county board could know how much money we would have saved if we would have built this back in ninety seven, ninety eight. We know in two thousand and nine, what's there compared to what we're looking at now would have a hell of a saving.
All right. So again, I, you know, the point was made that I didn't hear anybody say we shouldn't, we shouldn't build anything. So I guess that's a step closer, Don. And that's a good sign, but.
It's three steps back.
Again, it's that old location, 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 real estate question that, that keeps coming up. And, and we've got to, we've got to figure out and we've got to get answers that everybody's comfortable with. And, you know, I I look at it and it's, it's something that we have a strong need for. And as, as society continues to slip here in Gotham, that's slowly going to make its way into the court system and everything else. And it's something that I dread the day that they have a problem there and it makes its way into the courtrooms and, and the, the security issue there. Or even for that matter, our, our jail. And as long as we've waited, we've been, I guess, very, very lucky that we haven't had any of those incidents. So if there's no further questions, and I'm thinking I'm also going to put a slot on February's county board so that we have a half hour. So that if there's any questions, because we don't have the opportunity to talk as a group like we are right now very often. So at that time, if there's questions or concerns or information that we have gathered from staff or anybody else that we want to share, we'll try and get it in the packet and or be able to be available for a few questions. So, Don.
Also, anybody that has a question or suggestion like Stanhead emailed me and we'll put that together so we can get this as quick as we can to you.
With this, and are we going to allow in February meeting, we're going to allow for public input from people that, that want to speak up on their issue.
Supervisor Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that I, I don't think was mentioned tonight because nobody wants to hear this scenario. But the do nothing scenario, if we don't make this decision, we're spending thirty plus million dollars on a building across the road that's useless. And after we spend the thirty million dollars, it'll be useless still. That's the do nothing option. And that hasn't been mentioned and I, maybe it was and I missed it, but I, I, I don't think that's been mentioned. I just felt that that needed to be mentioned.
And if it's not a do nothing, if we can't come to a consensus or whatever too.
Supervisor Maresi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions on timeline stuff. Seems to me like we're going to have, and please just allow me this indulgence, we're going to probably have a resolution saying we need, we need a, a new law enforcement center in some parts, which will kind of redact the twenty fifteen resolution that was, that was referenced tonight. And also, and that, that would just need a majority vote, correct? Okay. So then we'll probably then have a resolution on location and where that, where this building should be placed. And that resolution would just need a simple majority again, correct? I think so.
Yes.
So then if, you know, we're probably going to get a unanimous vote that we do need to build this new building, right? We could have a contentious vote on location. But then we're going to have this design development and intent to borrow. And we're going to need to put down some money. And that's where we have the potential to slide off the rails a little bit. Is that, that's at a super majority or a three quarter majority?
Intent to borrow is three quarter. And we haven't hooked up together a timeline on what that intent to borrow process looks like. Because we have to be far enough in the design that we have numbers that are solid enough to go forward with that, which we can't get to until we know location. So, so though some of those decisions need to be made earlier so that we can get to those next sets of decisions.
So what happens if we don't find a place? Like, we need to have an apples and apples discussion about cost. And if we can't even find a place in the next, I know, hundred and sixty days here, what, what are we going to do? Because you're running out of time. This term is running out. You're going to have a whole new board in two years.
Well, the other one is I really have to think about the resolution because it's almost two, two questions. You know, how do you take a vote on, do you build it down? So it might have to be two separate resolutions and I don't know how, I, I gotta, I've got to think about that for a bit. Supervisor Barry Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think a lot of thought does need to get put into that because if we only need a simple majority to say, well, are we going to build it? And then there isn't enough people vote for it to finance it. We've just shot ourselves in the foot over and over again. So we should not put the cart maybe in front of the horse.
Supervisor Syke.
Well, to Supervisor Barry Chakowski's point, you know, the, once we vote to build this and we, and we agree that we need it. And once we decide whether it's downtown or a green space, at that point in time, to Supervisor Maresi's comment, we're going to have to drag some supervisors kicking and screaming along with us over the finish line. Because whether you want it downtown or out in the green space, you've already said you want it. We've already come to a consensus that we want it. Now, are we going to have four or five supervisors once we get all the way down the road? Derail this and say, I'm not voting for it. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go along and fund it and take it off the rails? At that point in time, we, we got to drag them with us kicking and screaming over the finish line, regardless of where it is.
That's like.
So I guess if there's no further comments, I gather your questions and be ready for February's meeting. And with that, return.